Good morning, Chiaj. This is Shammy. I'm on the line. I see that Delegate Daniels and also Delegate Begay on the line as well. And also Dave Zeller is on the line from NAPI. Also, I just sent out the PowerPoint presentation from NAPI. You should have that in your email. Daniels and Wilson?
Daniel from Stewart, sounds like Tim Ruppers.
Better start practicing now.
Good morning. This is Delegate Rickness on the call.
Good morning, Chair. I'm just busy trying to get all the documents out to you all. I just want to double check. Did you all receive your legislation number 009821, the updated copy? If not, I'll send it right now.
Ms. Begay, go ahead and resend it.
Okay, I'll do that right now. Chair and also RDC that are on the line, just for your information, I sent out the copy of the legislation as well as the PowerPoint presentation from NAPI. And Chairman Dave Zeller is also on the line. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Begay. Honorable members of RDC, are you on the call?
Thus far, I see three members, I mean, two members, Wilson and Chairman Daniels and yourself, Chair.
Thank you.
Chairman Ness, this is Thomas Walker. I'm on the call.
Good morning, Honorable Lieutenant Walker. Thank you for getting on the call. And also, Ms. Begay, I believe we do have a quorum of four at this time, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 10:08 a.m. My name is Rickness, Chair of RDC. Ms. Begay, could you do the roll call, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. This is Resource Development Regular Meeting of June 23, 2021. Roll call. Ricky Ness.
Delegate Rickness is present.
Wilson Stewart, Jr.
Present.
Thomas Walker, Jr.
Present.
Mark Freeland will be excused. I just received a text and the email. Key Allen Begay. Chairman Daniels.
Good morning. I'm here.
Mr. Chair, you have four members on the call, and it constitute a quorum for you to conduct your meeting with Mark Freeland being excused from the meeting today. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Begay. Ado, shnanta. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, could you do the prayer, please?
Hakoshin, Chairman Ado, meeting members, Adonki staff. Ado ta'is'anki, ta'althrohat'e. No khaet, kekha'ho'anki, tsoduzun beniye. Shida peha'one'igi t'a'e, tsoduzun ta'ha'des'i'ekho. Ko'hot'e'ekho. Adonki shi'to, yit'soduzun ah'hallo. Ak'ito, chi'noksi'ito, hot'e'ekut'e'i, yat'e'ekho. Kepe'la'itl'e, hot'e'ekho ntsahakis'to, inedel'ine. Pe'la'itl'e, no tsoduzun, eketsudalzulzun ocho, nzon'te'ekho. No be'yat'e'le, hot'e'ekho, ixi'da, ixi ben'igi t'a'hallo. Ak'oh, kha'ixi'de'ya, na'and'ida, kha'du dilze. Huxonzo'de'to, na'as'tan ximma, do yadu lilit'itcha. E'tsoduzun, e'de hana'ditsi'ekho, ditsi, la'halde, kha'beniye. E'ya, ch'edil'ya'to, beniye'te'ya'ko, nda'ldet'to, beniye, ch'edene'te'n'ekho. Ichi, e'tsoduzun, e'tch'edil'inkl, la'and'ya'te'ya pehadi'ti'ekho. Ado ho, shehu'inzun, e'to, aben'sedikis'to, she, edi, milse'ko na'as'tan ximma, do yadu lilit'itcha'ekho. Itcha'ekhoet'e'ya, honitl'o, do chitni'na. Ra'tan xinitsu'igi'te'ekho. E'ya, ina'pe'na'ilti, do ko'ixi, yod'eni, ninigipil, do yon'ko'ni, ninigipil, e, ch'enda'ilti, nda'ho'n'ikhe'ya. Do ko', nixi, ina', na'ltlo'sudat'e'gi, ot'a'ke, da'te'egi, do hasin'el'na'boritcha, na'anish, na'anish. Ado'le'ekho ko', ike'ya'p'ak'ago ko', nezna'te'indo ba'ana'ezna, te'ya'p'skata'wissu. E, e'te'ekho p'ak'ay, e, na'anish'da'le'to, ne, t'ne'pa'da'innish, t'ne'pa'da'ya'ekho. Ne ban'del'ish, oh, yu'chi, e, e'te'ekut'e'i, na'anish'tan, da'da'ku'ichi, ha'ya'ta'to, na'it'a. Do la'it'e'ot'a, da'innish'ekho ko', ak'ochitne'te'i, iti, pa't'e'le'to, jons'o ban'sas'kis'ekho. Ak'oh, ado, hot'e'i, beni'li'to ban'sikis, a'ta'ch'el. Hot'e'ekho, ak'oh, kha'et'e'ya, pa', na't'a, beniyet, la'haldehna'ani'ne'to'de'se'ekho. Ha'dat'e'ekho she'ba'hditsi, ke'ya'has'anki, do, t'ho'ha'dat'e'egi, na'ltlo'sh. Adon'da'ho, ke, chi'neda'te'egi'ta. Do na't'a'de'ichi'ekho, na't'a, b'shna'has'ankho ko', e, e'te'ekut'e'e'ya, pa', 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 pa'ha'ne'ichi, n'de'ekho, na'anish'de'ichi, na'dya, pa'ha'wan'da. Hot'e'egi, hasin'el'la'and'as'igut'e'e'ya, e'te'le, ixi ba'hanadi'ts'edichi. Ak'oh, nixi kha'et, t'ne'banand'a, e, klinigi, nixi, la'hadut'e'e'i, e'to, to'tshoben'il'ana'dan'de'ekho. Ado, ad'konilt'e, xi'n'de'ha', hot'e', ad'a, ad'a'ye'ga'beni'na, anish'to'ye'ga'bitzona'atselot'e'te, t'ne'begi edest'i'to, t'ne'ban'hat'a. Jo, jo kha'egi, e'tsoduzun, e, ndit'a'likho, e, in'habehaz'und'ol'el, de'ixan'edit'ne'el, ik'ekoh, e'ya, nixi kha'ch'tli'to'de'se, jonitsu'n'ekho, na'as'tan ximma, do yadu lilit'itcha'ekho. Hot'e'ekho, nixi be'etsi'el, e, khallo, nixi t'ha'az'un'ekho. Ye'go, nitz'ad'ho, ina', e, khallo'ekho, a'ts'ot'a'ts'be'inni, na'n'i, e, nixi nix'ad'ichi, n'de'ekho. Ak'oh, hot'e'ekho she'ni, nixi'ma'do, nixi, khallo. Jo, hot'e'ekho, t'ne'ch'ta'ho'n'ne, a'txinda ni'kli'di, hot'e'ekho. Mado, nixi, masan'ichi, hin'atsoduzun, no, hot'e'ekho. Ko', iben'na, e, a't'a'tsoduzun, ade'le. Ichi, hot'a'tsoduzun, be'hanana's'ti'to'de'se, ko'de'cho pa'insun'ot'e'ti, shnan't'a, ko'pil, e, e'ta', e, inda'ilti, la'halde'to, tsoda'iltzun. Ak'oh, hot'e'ekut'e'e'ya, na'anish'peti, nikhat'ichi, kha'et'e'i, yat'e'ha'na'anish'na'dil'ne'te'ekho. Ado, nixi be'etsi'el, do, nixi behotsa', e'to, e, e'ta', be'nikha'to, wals'ichi, hot'os'il'ekho, t'an'ixitsi'el'oh, yat'e'ho, nitz'de'ichi'so, n'hin'hat'a. Ah'hallo'goh, b'chi ha'animil'ne, b'chi nitzitsi'el'oh. Jo, hot'e'ekut'e'i, e, e, nit'e'do'de'se. Hot'a'de'tsoduzun'ili, e'de has'ti'to'de'se, do, nachan'da'anish'i, edo, ho, na'anish'de'le, edo, edo, edo'hot'a'te'ed'ol'el'ekho, nachab'achi, nachpa'oh. Nachab', nachab', shwon'ol'lo'go, ak'oh, hot'e'ekho. Ado, to, ho, ged'ot'abetsi'el'oh, had'a'edni'go, ho, e, b'shna'anish'na'dil'ne'te'ichi. Ado, ko' nachan'da'anish'i, edo, ha'yuv'ekho, ike'ya, p'ak'ag'ekho. Navah'ho nation, che'e, e, a'tsa'bij'i'ekho, hot'e'ekho na't'a, be'dahika. Ak'oh, ede, ede a'tso. Yanda'anish'i'igi, ho, e, e, badjo ba'inisun'ekho. Ado, ho'n'ike'ya p'ak'ago ko', t'ne'pa'da'innish, e, la'and'ekho, la, sikhilo, ntsahun'telk'ekho, do, ho, bena'anish'de'el. E'do, ho, nhol'itcha, ze'dan'eg'okho, nda'ho, ko'de'n'ch'tas'uda, ndas'ul'ha'dat'e'egi, e, chi'hot'a, e, e, n'il'ee, ho, hot'e'do'ashte', ye'go, bena'anish. E, e'da'iyil'das'ini, t'ne'bananish, t'ne'p'ak'ay'eli, ditsi'nt'a, hot'e', iben'na, t'an'il'ni. Hot'e'ekho, hot'a'tsoduzun, e, e, behaytzi'to'de'se, ko', a'tch'ot', e, e, ba'han'sikis'iben'na, e, a'tch'ot', nixi ol'itcha, jons'un'ekho. Ko'de, ike'ya p'ak'ah, ho, nixi t'ne'eh, ho, t'ne' t'ne'n'ichi, ninig'i, ede. E, e, beni'li'to'de'se, lto, nixi ol'itcha. Hot'e'ekho, ko', nacha, nixi shwon'ol'lo'do'de'se, ho'da'nit'e. Jo, ado, e, chi'ba'insun, chi'ba'hu'inzun, nts'ha'agi, chi'e, e'te'ekho. Ak'oh, ko'de'ichi, nixi hol'ijixxe'ikl'ne, kha', nahal'ijixti, ha'egi, e'ya, biyin'ch'lan'hol'ijixko'. Ak'oh, ko' chi'ba'hu'inzun, ede, ch'is'nsa'bens'ed'ekis. Ado, ko' na't'a'egi, e, an'ixi init'e'ekho, e, e, ben, ben'ail'ne'se'ekho. An'ixi ben'ya'ne'ta, do, t'an'ixi n'ebenitcha. Do, she'ba'da'ho'n'ea'ana'dan, ndahaz'ii. Ixi'do, ha'yuv'do, she'la'yu'dan, t'ch'od'ol' she, eh'da'le. Hot'e'ekut'e'i, nahuel'ijixn'te', t'on'benitcha, do, bitzona'iltzun. Eda, kha', hot'a, ben'na'ikha'egi, e, e, n'il'ed'ol'el, na'na'alt'o, e, n'il'ego, e, e, ban'sikis'to'de'se, na'anish'i'igi, ak'oh, hot'e'do'de'se'ekho, ak'oh, digend'le'eh, ho'de, e, nixi d'unit'i, kha', hot'a'ts'kon'ep'beniye, nixi d'unit'i, kha'ko'. Ak'oh, hot'a'de'ichi, o'tso'ho'ke'az'unda, e, e, ben'sed'ekis'oh, ho'tsoduzun'da'boritcha. And ah'ho'sun, sun'ada'te'egi'da'ho, t'lat'ets'nan'ani'il'inkl, ne'it'ag'oh, yit'ahl'ho, hot'e'ekho. Ak'oh, hot'e'ekho, ado, tsoduzun'da'abel'it'i, t'lat'ets'edon'sahakis'te'e'ya, chi'ba'hu'inzun. Inedel'ine, jo, hot'a'do, e, nde'ekhi. Ak'oh, ado, tsoduzun, la'adat'e, jo, jo, hot'a'do, e, e, den'il'zun, nixi l'om ban'sikis', chi'hot'a, ntsas'kis'ekho. Ak'oh, yat'i, e, eda'la'ha'egi'te'ekho, chi'ba'hu'inzun, nigi'do, eda'la'ha'egi'te'e. Ado, beniye, beniye, chi'ba'di, ninig'i'do, eda'la'ha'egi'ta'te'ekho. Oh, bas'odil'zun'oh, she'ni, chi'da'la'egi'te'n'shi'te', jonitsun'ekho. Ak'oh, iben'na, e, kha'et, e, hot'a'tsodisun'do'de'se, ko'da'tso, nixi ol'itcha, she'nigi'ta, e, hot'a ban'sas'kis'ibe'ekho. San'it'oh, st'kuitzul'ki'ji'ki, hot'e'ekho, la'arzad', la'ar'kaga'ha'ni, init'a, ho. Hot'e'ekho, ado, ko'n'ike'ya p'ak'ah, ko', yon'ol'nan, hot'e'te'ekho, shan'ho, do, nixi nah'lti ndadi, ni'inde, do, ye'go, nixi nah'lt'oh, n'de. Ado, ko', ko', e, e, ba'ba'ja'ini'na, ado, ba'chahnitsun'do, ike'ya, yon'ini'ne, hot'e'ekho. Ado, e, ado, ado, ben'alt'e'ekut'e'e ban'sikis'ot'e'te'ekho. Le'to, do, la'na'da'ke'ya, she'da'ha'jon'ende. E, nixi ben'k'il'chaz'ani'igi'ichi, deti, ye'go, t'den'il'di, do, yon'ini'no, ban'sikis'ekho. E'de, n'echi'ta', hot'a'shi'de, na'san'ani'ikhat'ol'el, jo, jo, hot'a'de, ban'sas'kis'dichi, kha', tsoduzun'sha'ho'anki, e, fa'hen'sun, kha', be'has'ti'to'de'se, san'ed'ol'ee, sha'il'ne'to'de'se'ekho. Hot'a'de, chi'ba'insun'dichi, ho, shnan't'a, Resource Development Committee, ho, e, e, ch'ni'ikhat'oh, ho'de'nik'na'anish. E ben'kata'ho, kuis'kana', ak'oh, eda', beni'la', benil'toit'a, e, na'anish'de'le, ak'oh, ditsi, ho, kha'et, e, hana'ilti'ya'to'de'se'ekho, adon, nachan'da'anish'i, nihol'itcha. Ado, ko' nat'a'ni'ko, t'ate'ka, la'has'ad'oh, ba'da'innish, la'and'ya, panaz'ee, edo, beni'li'to'de'se, la'ana, lto' ditsi. Ado, ko' t'has'un'ede, shnah'has'ankho, ho, lto', a'hanana'te'ekho, ho, na'anish'e, eda'an', e'do, nat'a'ni'ko. Ho, t'ha'hallo'ekho, t'ne'begi'da'ilti'ni, t'ne'ba'ada'iz'inel'ko. Ak'hot'e'ekho, ta'ku'ichi, ta'dat', inedat', ak'oh, da'ba'hu'initsun. E'do, e'do, e, pa', tsoduzun'ban'na'ana'do'de'se, lto', nachab'shwon'ol'lo'do'de'se'ekho. Abetsi'el'oh, hana'da'ol'ni'ed'ol'el'ekho. Ado, ko'do, ba'hadel'ne'ego, ho, shna'san'ani'ikhat'ol'el, nixi'do, ha'hanani'te'e'do'de'se, chi'hot'a, e, chi'ba'inisun, ak'oh, hot'e'ekho, ado, ko'de'e'ya, ike'ya p'ak'ado, e, a'hot'es'a. Nixi b'ne'akha'di she, bena'anish'da'de'do, ol'itcha'da. Hot'e'ekho, ike'nda'k'ay, ndas'ul'ha'tso'da'dan'de'ekho, ko', a'di she, la'na'ke'ya'ta, a'di she, dan'is'ad. A'de, ho, bena'anish'de'le, la'ont'e'egi'te, e, ndahale'nde. Ko'de ban'sikis'ekho, nihol'itcha, jo, hot'a'de, tsoduzun'be'ba'has'ti'to'de'se, ko', do, do, to'tshobed'ol'ne'te'e'do, e, 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 nit'e'ekho, nit'la'ah, t'neh, nixi d'nenig'i. Ak'oh, o't, 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 a'tsa'bij'i, e, e, hot'a'de, ban'sikis'ekho, nixi d'ne'eh, ti'ni'ego. Ichi, hot'a'tsoduzun, be'has'ti'to'de'se, digend'le'eh, n'ol'lini. Hot'e'ekut'e'i, kha'et, e'sha'ho'anki, hot'a, e, ishla'do'de'se, tsoduzun. Huxon'do'de'se, jo, jons'o'de'se, shnan'ekho, nde, bal'igen'has'ah. Jo, hot'e'ekho, a'twa'shada'a, a'tw'nah'ho, kha'son'ell'ni, ya'ell'ni. Hot'e'ekho, ak'oh, e, e, a'di, e, nixi, huxon'do'de'se, jo, hot'a'de, nitzikis'oh, da, hot'a'de, nixi liat'e'do, biten'il'na', ak'oh. Hot'e'ekho, nixi na'go, huxon'go, nixi kha'da, huxon'go, ho. Hot'e'ekho, nixi, huxon'go, hot'e'ekut'e'e nitzikis'ekho. Hot'a, ina'bet'ni'na', hot'a'tsodisun'do'de'se. Huxon'has'tli'to'de'se, shon'ixi, huxon'has'tli, 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 huxon'has'tli.
Thank you, Chairman. Ik'eh'eh'nt'aga, nachats'ad'ent'enge, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Actually, back here, na. So, khoroshin'na'sanana, shnanta. We're on announcements on the agenda. Do you have any announcements, shnanta? Ms. Begay, do you have any announcements for us?
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, just for your information, that RDC had under calendar a meeting, leadership meeting set for Friday, June 25th, with the Eastern Land Board and the Tribal Ranchers. However, that meeting will be canceled because the Navab Nation Council would be calling their special session. They've obtained enough signatures to call this special session. So, more than likely, I'll be sending out cancellation notice today. And then, on Monday and Tuesday, we have on our calendar the work session with Division of Community Development. And that meeting location was approved for Albuquerque. And so, I just need to secure the location from the CDC staff so that you all be able to do your travel for that. And then, July 2nd, RDC is scheduled to meet with NDOT and NECA. And I'm not sure if the committee would like to do virtual meeting or in-person meeting because NECA is willing to host the meeting up in Shiprock. But that, that meeting is scheduled for July 2nd, 2021. On July 6th, RDC has a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, and it's at 9:00, and that will be a teleconference meeting. Then on July 9th, RDC has a leadership meeting with the Navabo Housing Authority and to discuss the Indian housing plan that is not ready to be processed in the 164 review. And so, those are what I have on the calendar for July. Also, on July 12th, RDC will be meeting with the Water Rights Commission, BNR, and Department of Water Resources for an update. So those are on the calendar for now. And you all know that the week of July 19th to the 23rd, the Navab Nation had their summer session. So, that is what I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Begay, for, for that. And doing a good job for RDC's schedule and keeping up with, with us. So, thank you very much. Number two on the agenda, we have recognizing guests. Yes, Honorable Daniels, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. K'od'ong'e, announcements, kha'oz'iz'ge, adu, let, oya'ya, ba'hadesh, n'tonk'od'ong'e, yesterday, Shantul Chapter Day email da'illa regarding mountain line, nag'e'da'shtutso. Ak'oh, didon'ta, k'endo'na, oya'ya, she'be, b'chinga, she'da'to, oya'ya, da'te'inko, nag'e'da'ts'ko. So, oya'ya, st'outa, st'outa, the, k'ish'oh, hot'a'te'egi. Nag'e'da, between Ojeto and Naftif'An, there's an area called Pay' Mesa. A'ja'ta'f'kanigi'ta Mesa, say, be'ka'ja'bah'ane'te, da'na'shtutso. Because one of the elders, she, she abandoned her home because of this mountain line issue. Nag'e'da, the ledge had, as'one'te, fe'j'eho. So even that, although, she, she left her, her house. Oya'ya, 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 nag'e'da, na'shtutso'ge, oya'ya, bah'ane'to, do, she, a'tsa'da, the, kuis'ixi, t'kada'p'ak'aja, because that's kind of like a, in a wooded area, nag'e'da, Pay' Mesa. Pay' Mesa, oya'ya, da'ta'la'ts'mt, t'ne'ng'e'da, nag'e'da, g'dan'ad'ka'do, chi'os'tan'da'ka'do, oya'ya, 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 al'ke't, nixi, oya'ya, ye'da, do, oya'ya, k'od'ong'e'da, nag'e'da, I don't know, nag'e'da, fish' wildlife, da'te'da, speta'ha'z'und'at, um, song'ya, ede'da, ede'ya, o't, o't, shan'is'pe'ha'z'und'ol'el, ado, na'na, k'od'ona, a'tal'ya, she. Aya'a'te'tol'el'se, and az'una'ke't, init'oa, fin'ta't, t'le'tol'el'ekho. Ak'oh, hot'e'egi na'shtutso, oya'ya, ye'go'to, do, na'n'ye'tu, ol'ye'tu. Doh, nan, yeet, oh, yeet, oh, the, the, chin, on, eh, eh, ya, the, people, oh, yeah. So, eh, eh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, bashin, na, as, elders, keh, eh, ne, ye. Na, eh, on top of, uh, Pay Mesa, na, eh, tall, man, god, eh. Na, eh, da, street of land, and the, keh, da, had, had, done, da, shka. Eh, di, eh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, bashin, eh, yeah, kodo, eh, di, ba, dish, na, kodo, Mr. Chair, um, thank you.
Honorable Daniels, thank you for that announcement.
Ashin, eh, di, ah, da, ni she, elders, she, eh, da, da, chih, ah. Chah, chah, she, oh, eh, di, da, na, stutso, shenzon, she, lta. Ado, eh, sheh, ah, doh, eh, ben kilhwin, laghi, uh, Honorable Daniels.
Ado, any other announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Begay?
This is Shammy. Um, just to let Delegate Daniels know, as soon as I receive that, uh, email, I forward the information to Ms. Gloria Tom. So the, the, so that they will be aware of your concern, the community's concern. I will follow up sometimes today after the meeting on the, um, on that issue. The other thing is that, um, I believe, uh, other Navav Nation communities are experiencing that. It might be they're migrating because of the fires that are happening out there. Just as well, last night, at, out in the pasture, we had a whole herd of elk. And so, we just assumed they're migrating because of the fires, so. I, I, I think the wildlife is on the move because of that, so. But I will follow up with Ms. Tom's department as, after the meeting on your concern for the, uh, Shanto community. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Begay, if you would. Um, if you're gonna email her, carbon copy us as well. So, thank you very much for that. Honorable members of RDC, are there any other announcements? None. We'll go to number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. We'll have introductions for all, starting with members of the Resource and Development Committee, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Uh, yeah, yeah, na, na, eh, shenanat, uh, Chair, no, meeting members and our, uh, staff, ado, the, uh, listeners, uh, listening audience, uh, good morning to each and everyone, again. Uh, di, Thomas Walker, eh, di, shne, uh, doh, uh, sadi, toh, oh, twnaheli, oh, tcho. Doh, na, na, ah, san, doh, tsakho, uh, ge, taholiya, thasin, eh, tahwissa. Eh, banas, shne, shko, chochi, be, bashban, san, uh, benanish, dekl, ne, ye. Na, tine, tine, ben, ye, doh, chid, ye. Eh, ahhot ekho, ado, doh, en, shne, ye, eh, uh, shing, hin, shle. Ado, be, thoni, eh, ya, bashish, sheen, doh, ah, tsah, di, chih, dan, la. Sadish, ge, shne, esh, na, le, dat, eh. Ah, da, uh, da, hazus, ni, dohli, naanat, it, uh, la, le, eh, keh.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, Honorable Stewart. Honorable Stewart.
Yeah, shina, I'm here. I, I was, um, trying to take off my mask. Um, but, good morning, everybody, the shina, the shina, keh, the shijaya, ja. So, I, yeah, sudzon, be, hainzi, la, this morning, shijaya, ja. Ado, shma, ja, keh, la, ya, eh, na, ado, and the community members, and no, shne, ye, ado, he, shen, is, no, sa, ye, from the programs, divisions, and no, shne, ye, da, koni. Not eh, di, binibiyeh, for our regular RDC meeting. Um, she, eh, chi, eh, eh, kwa, eh, Wilson, see, Stewart, Junior, eh, eh, chi, eh, doh, kodo, tachhah, soh, da, esh, eh, doh, kodo, eh, be, bashban, san, eh, eh, shle, tachhah, soh, doh, be, keh, hal, chi, twen, il, doh, ni, chi, da, kado, di, osan, la. Keya, le, ne, ye, ba, ah, tachhah, gi, eh, kado, eh, ya, be, ba, tachhah, da, shah, eh, ko. Ado, in the Forty Fifth Agency, a la, represent, eh, for the Resource Development Committee. Ado, uh, tchuh, tsah, ni, eh, shne, na, esh, tachhah, chi, ni, bashish, sheen, tachhah, chi, eh, be, twen, shen, la. Um, ah, konso, shina, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you very much, kodo. Ado, na, na, kodo, it's, li, ya, da, ni, kodo, tachhah, the Delegate Stewart. I was taking off my mask, mask, eh, it, an, eh, ah, ah, no, ne. Ah, da, shne, dat, li, ya, da, ah, tla, tachhah, da, chi, eh, eh, dat. Kodo, da, shud, eh, chi, kodo, shunat, ah, shun, eh, doh, shik, eh, da, shun, eh, tahwissa, ah, ne, kodo, na, imash, sa, gi, kodo, Herman Daniels, Junior. Eh, doh, ne, en, shun, eh, be, ah, ne. Ado, na, na, keh, da, sheen, eh, da, shu, reh. Two, keh, lini, ado, na, khaed, ne, da, eh, da, shu, chih. Ado, has, ka, tla, ho, eh, da, shun, na, le, ho, ot, ah, men, shne, ho. Na, eh, da, Ojeto, ado, na, tis, on, those two chapters, they're, they're in Utah. Ado, na, na, Shanto, doh, be, kene, there, in Arizona, so I represent four chapters. Four chapters, eh, banas, shne, shko, da, what, eh, kodo, na, eh, da. Um, Western Agency, ajda, RDC, kodo, eh, as, be, represent, eh, um, eh, along with my chi, kodo, da, Delegate, uh, Walker, kodo. Eh, doh, dat, only, jeh, da, me, dohli, kodo. Ado, kodo, da, ah, ti, ba, ba, keh, il, kodo, um, la, ni, lini, ye. Seko, oh, yeah, ah, chi, shko, ni, ken, da, ti, josh, koo, shko, ah, ti, kodo, da, dana, oh, yeah, eh, ha, si, da, dog, dr, shabala. Ah, ah, eh, dah, wesh, kinh, song, da, oh, yeah, eh, ha, si, oh, yeah, ah, ni, ah, it, inahl, na, ho, na, ah, ti, keh, eh, keh, kodo, oh, eh, ni, ken, da, ti, josh, ah, tuth, shko. So, eh, 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 oh, ah, ti, ba, keh, il, ah, ti, dah, ta, oh, yeah, ah, ti, jona, dohli, shko. So, eh, eh, da, ba, ah, si, dohli, eh, ni, chih, tachhah, da, si, dohli, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels, Honorable Kyalan Begay. Honorable Begay.
She, eh, ha, Rick Ness, eh, she, eh, wa, la, na, en, shle, oh, oh, ze, tachhah, chi, ni, bashish, sheen, tsenah, be, shind, da, shu, chih, eh, doh. Kea, ah, ne, eh, da, shun, na, le, ah, tachhah, eh, da, in, en, shle, haz, tachhah, da, wi, chapters, banas, shne, shi, gi, eh, 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 ha. Seta, on, doh, San Juan, ne, la, huns, uh, Upper Fruitman, Burnham, Nukem. But, eh, eh, ha. Koro, shenanish, eh, en, la. Ado, eh, sheh, ah, nolt, shko, kui, da, is, nolt, ah, gi, doh, koro. Eh, la, ya, dat, eh, hinan, ah, da, no, shen, oh, she, ado, island, da, la, so, welcome, everybody.
Eh, she, eh, ha, we'll go to, uh, one of our colleagues is on the line, Honorable Paul Begay.
Oh, yeah, eh, Ben, uh, Honorable Chair, Reverend Ricky Ness. Uh, doh, so, so, let, go, uh, Delegate Wilson Stewart, ado, na, so, so, let, go. Honorable Delegate Herman Daniels. Ado, uh, RDC Committee, that is, no, sa, ye, Paul Begay, eh, eh, chi, eh, kodo. Na, ho, konst, oh, eh, ah, si, na, ho, la, ah, deh, ah, deh, eh, na, t'ah, ban, sa. Uh, be, shka, eh, si, na, ban, sab, eh, ti, tachhah, eh, kaib, eh, toh, ado, twnaheli. Sadish, ge, shne, da, ne, eh, shlin, doh, be, thoni, eh, bashish, sheen. Shich, eh, eh, tora, chi, ni, da, ne, da, na, la, ado, shun, na, le, eh, eh, ki, ah, ah, ni, da, na, la, eh, ko, sheh, eh, ado, eh, da, ban, da, doh, tich, shi, tachhah, isn't, sa, dohli. Ado, njon, kon, si, da, doh, ah, doh, eh, yin, shil, taw, long, dohli, sheh, eh.
Chair. Thank you, Honorable Begay. Do we have any other honorable colleagues on the line with us? None. We'll go to RDC staff, Ms. Begay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee and also the audience that are on the call. I believe we have at least thirty-six people on the call today. Eh, Shammy Begay, in, sheh, eh, doh. I work as a legislative advisor to the Resource Development Committee. Now, keh, in, en, shon, division, bash, chain, to, by, eh, da, shu, chih, tachhah, chi, ni, da, da, shen, la, da, eh, san, en, shle. Mr. Chair, back to you. Oh, before that, um, I want to thank, um, uh, Shija, Thomas Walker, for the beautiful prayer. Eh, sheh, eh, ado, ado, Delegate Daniels, Yaj, thank you for doing the rain dance. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Woody.
Oh, yeah, eh, Mr. Chair, ado, uh, committee members, da, no, shne, ni, ni, doh, ya, eh, ben, eh, ni, di, shni, dohli, ke, churita, Woody, in, sheh, eh, doh. Ta, bahan, shlo, da, be, la, jene, bashish, sheen, ado, kea, ah, ne, da, shu, chih, eh, da, tsenah, jene, eh, da, shun, na, le. Hod, oh, ni, ch, eh, da, hazus, ni, dohli, ado, shija, eh, da, eh, sheh, eh, be, da, di, shni, june, on, hat, sa, ri, m, shi, shija, eh, eh, deh, be, eh, da, ni, eh, koni, tada, zin, na, eh, deh, be, nas, eh, ni, ka, eh, sheh, eh, da, di, shni, la, hod, oh, ni, ch, eh, da, hazus, ni, dohli, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Woody, Ms. Miss Khan.
Good morning, ya, eh, the, ne, shik, eh, ya, eh, RDC members, da, no, shne, ye, ado, ya, eh, be, bashban, da, san, eh, ye, da, no, shne, ye. Ado, ya, eh, da, no, so, all of you who are on the call this morning. She, Mariana Khan, da, shid, jene, doh, ne, in, shne, ye, eh, toh, eh, ye, lini, nashle, be, ah, ti, bashish, sheen, last year, da, shu, chih, san, jik, ne, da, shen, la. Ah, kud, oh, san, nashle, am, a, san, nashle, ado, na, la, nashle. She, eh, st, thank you very much for that beautiful, beautiful prayer this morning. Oh, very lovely. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Chair, I'll go back on to mute now.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Do we have Ms. Yako from Speaker's Office on the call?
Hi, good morning, Chairman Ness and members of the Resources and Development Committee. Um, yes, um, my name is Melinda Arvisto Siako, Legislative Staff Assistant for Speaker Damon here in Windoroc. Uh, tsenaj, jene, shlo, kea, ah, ni, bashish, sheen, da, tura, chi, ni, da, shu, chih, eh, da, shi, ni, da, shen, la. Um, ado, na, na, eh, eh, yeah, eh, yeah, in, swago, uh, should, eh, delegate Walker, um, for the prayer this morning. Uh, really appreciate, uh, opening up the day in that way. So, thank you very much, though, and good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Yako. Do we have anybody else from Legislative Council on the line with us? Mr. Mr. Witherspoon, are you on the line, sir? Honorable Witherspoon. No? Uh, Department of Justice?
I'm on the line, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, sir, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, eh, sheh, do, ah, Witherspoon, in, sheh, doh, li, da, ne, tachhah, chi, nashle. Uh, base, batahni, eh, bashish, sheen, batahni, eh, da, shu, chih, skar, sheh, da, shen, la, sheh, eh.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon, yeah, eh, welcome back also, sheh, eh. Eh, sheh, eh, ha, do we have, um, Mr. Dave Zeller on the call, sir? Ms. Larrangool. BIA, Ms. Cheryl Curly.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Ness, RDC members, Ms. Begay, everyone on the call. Cheryl Curly, BIA Navajo Region, to listen in on this meeting today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, um, Mr. Lester Sosie on the call?
Uh, no, sir, he, no, Chairman Ness, he's not, he's currently, uh, occupied in another meeting. But I did bring it to his attention and will alert you when he does during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Do we have Ms. Quinn from the Department of Justice?
Good morning, Chair, this is April Quinn with DOJ.
Morning, Ms. Quinn, thank you. Anybody else from Department of Justice?
Hi, this is Veronica Blackhat, um, I'm also on the line with DOJ, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackhat. Division of Natural Resources. Anybody else on the call today?
Good morning, Chair, this is Phil from, Chair, this is Philford from OPVP. I'll be listening in and, uh, taking notes for OPVP. Have a good day.
Ok, she, la, sheh, eh, Mr. Philford, welcome. Anybody else on the call?
Good morning, everyone, uh, this is Nick, I'm with the, uh, ECDU, the DOJ, just taking notes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
This is Jolynn Ashley, uh, Chair for, eh, for the Navav Nation Water Rights Commission. I'll be listening in as well, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Good morning, Chair, yeah, eh, ado, good morning, uh, honorable members of RDC, DCD on the line will be listening in, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning, Chair. Chairman Ness, RDC members, Edward D. with the Office of Navajo Government Development, listening in. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Sheh, eh, Mr. D., thank you for getting on the call with us. Certainly appreciate your presence today. Anybody else?
Good morning, Chair, and members of the Resource Development Committee, this is Ivan Bessenti with the Ranch and Eastern Land Management, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and RDC, um, this is Gabriel Sam with the Climate Change Department, and I will be tuning in today.
Good morning, sir, sheh, eh, anybody else? None? Thank you, everybody, for getting on the call. Number three on the agenda, we have reviewing and approving the agenda. Ms. Begay, could you read this in for the record, please?
Mr. Chair and members of the committee and the audience, Resource Development of the Twenty-Fourth Navav Nation Council, teleconferencing, RDC regular meeting, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, ten AM. Agenda, Presiding Ricky Ness, Chairperson, Thomas Walker, Junior Vice Chairperson. One, column meeting to order, roll call, invocation announcement. Two, recognizing guests and visiting official. Three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Four, reviewing and approving the journals, there's none. Five, receiving report, A, an update report relative to NAP's operational activities during the drought. B, status report relative to Intex business lease. Uh, six, old business, none, seven, new business, A, legislation zero, zero, nine, eight, dash, twenty-one. B, schedule, approving to schedule a leadership meeting with nomination land department and general land development department to discuss the one-stop shop and the proposal to waive raising permit, his consent requirements for public utilities. C, approving to modify DCDC slash RDC slash DCDC's June twenty-eight, twenty, and twenty-nine meeting. The location, eight, conclusion of committee meeting, other announcement, adjournment. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Begay, for reading the agenda. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. Motion. Motion, Stewart. Thank you, Honorable Stewart, second by. Daniel. Honorable Daniels, thank you. Any questions on the agenda? Chairman. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman and committee members. Um, like to-
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman and committee members. Um, like to propose an amendment to the agenda. So, under, uh, new business, item three, I'd like to, um, ask committee to consider adding an item. So, that would be for scheduling a, uh, a tour, a drought tour. As we, um, spoke yesterday about drought conditions, drought impact. And I mean, uh, leadership, uh, go out to the rangelands to see firsthand, even yet, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Is there a second? Motion by Honorable Vice Chair Walker to add RDC drought tour that we discussed yesterday. We'll add that under new business, it'll be D. So, we need a second for Amendment One.
Mister Chair, this is, uh, Delegate Daniel, I'll go ahead and second motion.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Are there any questions on the amendment, Amendment One? None? Okay. Honorable Freeland is excused. Honorable Stuart, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Gay? Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Chairman, I vote green.
Honorable Daniels?
Green.
We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries for Amendment One to add the RDC drought tour. To be scheduled for approval. Back to the main motion. Any other comments or questions on the main motion?
Not, Chairman?
None?
Delegate Stuart?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to request to add under the, um, bottom, under the reports, uh, for our future meeting. To hear a report from the veterinary clinic and also animal control.
So, Honorable Stuart, here making a motion for Amendment Two, to, uh, veterinarian clinic and animal control to reports?
Um, let's change it from reports, not, let's do a leadership with them, because I know it's going to take longer than a report.
Okay. So, your motion will be to add under new business, it'll be E. To request a leadership meeting with the veterinarian clinic as well as the animal control officers. Is there a second? Motion by Honorable Stuart, Amendment Two.
Mister Chair, this is, yeah.
Honorable Daniels, seconds the motion. Any questions on Amendment Two? Is there any modification, additions, or changes to the agenda? That we can put under Amendment Two? None? How could she not? We'll go ahead and vote on Amendment Two. Honorable Stuart, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Uh, Chairman, I vote green.
Honorable Kealan Bagay? Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Honorable Freeland is excused, so we have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries for Amendment Two. To add the leadership meeting request to have the veterinarian clinic and animal control, um, report. So, issue, it'll be under E. Thank you. Back to the main motion. Any other questions or comments? None? Uh, Honorable Freeland is, is excused, so Honorable Stuart, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Gay? Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
I vote green.
Honorable Daniels?
Green.
We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries, we've adopted the agenda. And we'll go down to number four on the agenda, reviewing and approving journals. There's none. So, we'll go to number five, receiving reports, um, shnanta. I, we received a text message from our Legislative Council. Um, this legislation that I have under new business does not go to Hesi. It only goes to Resources and Development Committee, NABE, YET Committee, and the full Navajo Nation Council. My other legislation that is currently considered is currently on the agenda for today. So, we'll go ahead and continue on with the reports as, as it is on the agenda. A, update report relative to NAPI operational activities during the drought. Presenter, Mister Dave Zeller, CEO of NAPI and NAPI staff. Mister Zella? Mister Zella?
Thank you, Chairman Nez, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, you have twenty minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to address RDC and all our honored guests regarding current activities at NAPI. Uh, wish you all well on this day. First of all, um, a PowerPoint was sent out, I think, to the RDC members. So, you'll have that, um, before I start into that PowerPoint. I would like to, um, just cover a few things so that I can set your minds at ease. Um, NAPI is doing well in spite of the weather conditions. I'm, I'm on there now, as far as I know. Um, we have, uh, just finished our fiscal year, which ends May thirty-first. Um, so, we're still going through the process of making sure the books are closed properly, unofficially. Uh, the operations end of NAPI, I believe, showed, uh, five and a half million dollar net profit. Our revenues were two-point-nine-eight-four million more than budgeted. Uh, we're looking at a gross margin for last year of about fifteen percent, uh, which is what we had hoped for. Again, those numbers are all unofficial and unaudited at this point. Um, I would also like to point out that, uh, our numbers would include, uh, nine-hundred thousand that was paid out in, uh, bonuses to essential workers during the COVID period. Uh, we paid out basically one-point-three-six-three million in profit sharing to employees. And we also made a one-million-dollar dividend payment to the Navajo Nation as well. Um, the numbers do not reflect the acceptance yet of the SBA's one-point-nine-million PPP note. Um, that has been approved by Wells Fargo, but we don't have the official, um, notification from SBA. We are strong in cash, we have more than five million cash on hand, and, uh, NAPI, oh, we're looking at a hundred-and-thirty-nine million in total assets that we're responsible for. So, NAPI is strong, uh, we're thriving. Um, I just want you to know that from the fiscal standpoint. I would also like to point out that, um, you know, some of the areas that we're working on right now include, uh, the addressing of the drought situation on rangeland. We had, uh, Alejandro Carrillo from Chihuahua, Mexico here, a very similar area in climate to our sitting here. And he has been here, we entertained people from Crown Point, Burnham, Herfino, Shiprock, uh, as well to see the, to see the, uh, suggestions on how we approach going forward with the drought. Um, we will have Senator Ben Ray Luhon will be visiting NAPI on July first. So, we're looking forward to our visit with him, as well as our discussions with Brian Newland of the Department of Interior. Um, as we address situations that affect the NIP project. Uh, on that note also, our last NIP meeting was March nineteenth. Uh, we've had no further gatherings of the group since then. Uh, we're in the process of working with many farms and loop uh, on helping them getting their agricultural enterprises reborn, so to speak. Um, by offering to host people here for training, et cetera. Uh, the use of our lab for soil samples and water quality samples, et cetera. So, we're reaching out to the other enterprises, uh, as was a directive of, uh, Mister, uh, Kealan Bagay, or Delegate Kealan Bagay. Uh, we did make a presentation to NABI regarding the projects that we were looking at and potential inclusion using the new funds from ARP. Um, but we've not had any update on any of those yet from, uh, any of the Navajo Nation offices. I will start here now on a quick overview of the, uh, activities here at NAPI. Um, the first page, the reservoir elevation, although not as high as we always would like. We are certainly in more than sufficient, uh, standing there. Uh, we will have more than enough water to handle the requirements for our crop operation this year. Um, we're, so we're in good shape there, although we know that not everyone else is as fortunate with their water activities, uh, in the other lakes and areas, but the Navajo Dam, Navajo Lake, um, projections are more than adequate right now to get us through this particular crop year. We certainly won't have any problem staying above the, it's roughly six-thousand-feet, fifty-nine-ninety for our inlet elevation as far as, uh, keeping the water level at an adequate spot for us to be able to feed the irrigation system here at NAPI. Um, virtually all crops are in. At this point, we have almost twenty-thousand acres in alfalfa, alfalfa grass. Uh, we have already had one cutting there. We have opened up now all the market here, uh, at NAPI proper for people to come and get hay. There is no limit to the amount they can take right now. The, uh, the, there's also hay grazer, there's going to be like eighteen-hundred acres of that available shortly. Um, that will be in addition to the alfalfa, and I know we'll have the cover crops will be available later this summer as well with like oats and peas, et cetera. So, we're in good shape now as far as the forage availability for people. Uh, we have even set aside one-thousand-twenty-five tons of hay for the Navajo Nation Department of Ag and the Colorado ranches um, for their needs, uh, even though unfortunately at this point, uh, the Colorado ranches are deficient in payment to NAPI in the amount of twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-seven dollars and two cents. They're a hundred-and-seventy-five days past due on payment. They are the only account that is overdue at NAPI more than ninety days. Uh, our accounting department stays on top, making sure that we don't get into any bad debt expense. Um, and we're hopeful that the payment from Colorado ranch situation will be forthcoming. But we do still have, again, more than a thousand tons set aside for the Department of Ag and the Colorado ranches. That hay is set aside for their needs. Again, the alfalfa hay first cutting has already been done. Um, we had some concerns initially because one area of production, we refer to as South Chaco, we had a water line break early on in the year. That pipe that had to be fixed had been planted in October of nineteen-seventy-six. And we had to repair that pipe. Unfortunately, in that downtime, we had applied herbicide. Um, which then requires water to activate to help the weed problem. Obviously, the pipe went down, the weeds grew before the water got up. So, we'll have to deal with that at a different date, but that shows you the fragility of the NIP irrigation system. We did have another pump go down the other day. That cost for a replacement pump is six-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. So, that should tell you what we are dealing with every day in our fragile, uh, environment and trying to keep water to the crops and to the forages for the, uh, members. So, again, going back through alfalfa, I mentioned that, the beans are planted. Um, we have roughly just short of six-thousand acres of beans between the pinto and yellow beans. They'll be starting to be harvested in the fall. We just have to make sure we can get the crop to that point. Again, our crops, um, they are insured as well, um, through federal programs. So, if we have a problem and cannot deliver the crop, uh, we still have some semblance of return where we can hopefully at least get back most of our, uh, input costs, even if we don't get the projected, um, yield that we would expect from our budgets. We have planted more than eighteen-thousand acres of corn. That actually looks excellent right now. Uh, the trading department has done a really nice job of getting us hedged in there so that we know we will um, be able to harvest that at a very profitable level. We're looking at the highest corn prices in basically a decade's worth of time. The wheat crop, we are starting to turn the water off this week so that it could dry up. It looks particularly appealing. I don't know if over the entire crop will reach our one-thirteen that we did a couple of years ago. But some of it looks incredibly good. Um, and so, I'm very happy with that. There's more than five-thousand acres of wheat, uh, that we'll start harvesting, uh, early, early July. The native food sections, that includes white, yellow, and blue corn, those have been planted. The sumac is being harvested now. Uh, Navajo tea is also being harvested and dried. Uh, so, it will be available on the shelves quickly. Green chilies have also been started the harvesting process. Um, it's particularly difficult right now in those high tunnels, given the heat and the water situation and lack of, we either have rip-roaring winds try to blow through there, or it's still. And that puts a lot of heat stress on the chilies, but nonetheless, the chilies look really good. They seem to be disappearing off the shelves at Region Two just about as fast as they hit there, though. Um, but at some point, we'll catch up. Um, but at some point we'll catch up and be able to start moving it out of, uh, that area. The orchard, they're keeping up with the water there. The apple trees are looking good. We are finishing planting the organic watermelon. Uh, the two varieties there are known as Fascination and Sirius. And I can say quite easily, Nappy is known throughout the United States for the quality of their watermelon. We receive reports coming back from even places like Connecticut about how good the watermelon are. Um, so we're hopeful that we'll be, uh, looking at another successful crop there. We have also, in an effort to fight the wind damage and erosion, they have started planting shelter belts in various locations on the farm to try to help, um, to keep them a little cooler, to keep the wind scarring down and to hold the loss of our soil. Uh, they're also going to be planting some squash and zucchini. Um, I believe it's done now. Uh, the potato crop, the table stock is in the ground. That should be ready to be harvested late September. The organic potatoes should be going in the ground shortly as well. Uh, we've received lots of raves about those potatoes. In fact, Whole Foods named Nappy, uh, Supplier of the Year Award for, based on the potatoes. So we're getting recognition again throughout the United States for the very high quality of products that are coming off of Nappy. Um, again, now with this comes concerns. The concerns that we have to deal with mainly include the aging infrastructure, uh, keeping those systems going and active. Um, and hoping that when we do have downtime, that it's not at a crucial point in plant life. Um, a lot of times when the water is applied is a lot more important than how much water is applied. And, uh, that applies throughout the farm. So along with that water application, we have to be concerned about a natural predator, which is the prairie dog here. They do, quite frankly, millions of dollars of damage to Nappy. Uh, that is realized not just in the consumption of the crops, particularly when they're young and just sprouting through the soil, but it also deals with the concern of them eating through lines, conduits, um, disrupting power lines as an example. Um, creating extensive holes in the field, burrows with mounds that if one isn't careful and is hit just wrong or at too quick of a speed with the equipment, causes damage to the equipment. Certainly in the alfalfa fields, it's a problem because if the mowers don't entirely miss the, the mound, it dulls the blades on the, uh, cutters, et cetera. And you have to be careful of that effect also on the wheels, uh, you know, of the various equipment, tractors, grain carts, et cetera, um, creating a problem with the tires and the, the wheels there. And of course slowing you down because you have to be careful not to, uh, not to be, uh, damaging valuable equipment that way. From a labor pool standpoint, we are pretty stable right now at about 300 employees. It basically breaks down to about one-third are female, two-thirds are male. Uh, the percentage of native versus non-native is in that 98 to 99% native employees versus non-natives. Um, so we're doing that, but we do have a concern with coming up with enough employees. It is one of the most vexing and difficult problems we are dealing with now is just getting people who are willing to come to work. Um, I realize farming isn't a glamorous occupation and sometimes it can be difficult, given the weather conditions, but it is very, very difficult to come up with enough people to meet our needs at Nappy. And it's not just seasonal labors in terms of farm workers. We have a shortage also of engineers, electricians, welders, truck drivers, um, those skill levels as well. It is just very difficult to seem to attract more people to work at Nappy. Uh, you know, we certainly looked at all the different ways that we advertise, the way we recruit. Um, the HR staff's working very, very diffi- uh, very diligently at trying to take care of meeting our needs. It's been a difficult time here in planting. And certainly I don't think it will be any easier as we get into the fall and have to deal with, uh, harvesting those crops as well. Again, things like the squash, watermelon, et cetera. Um, or the organic potatoes. Um, right now, as mentioned earlier, I think we're in excellent shape with our NIP water. We have enough water. Um, big problems we have to deal with is making sure that traps and filters don't get filled with, uh, free blowing like tumbleweeds and stuff like that. Um, so that the pumps end up pulling extra hard and then burning out or seals giving out on some of those kind of conditions. Um, as long as we can keep the pumps running, I feel confident that we can bring in the crop and have another very profitable year. Um, we still have blocks nine, 10, and 11 that we would like to build out. We are pursuing a number of strategies to try to get that approval done, as mentioned before. We have a meeting with Ben Ray Luhon on the first. We're dealing with the Department of the Interior. And, uh, we're trying very, very hard to get this out. Um, one of the biggest concerns Nappy has is we do not have a problem marketing our product. Our problem is producing enough product. We frequently run out of most things starting about March, April. And then it's a matter of entering into our expensive season when we have all of our inputs that we have to put in. And as an example, just to show you the way the economy has changed, the price of fertilizer, for instance, one particular unit went up from $550 a ton to $900 a ton. So when you start looking at those effects, of course, the cost of fuel goes up, the cost of equipment and the equipment repairs goes up, labor is going up. We're having to deal with all of those. And, uh, you know, as a result, we're constantly having to try to tighten our belt, be more judicious on where our money is spent and, uh, as we continue to, to work through, through those proj- programs. Um, I mentioned about the number of kind of different crops that we produce. Um, one of the things that we did, we have reduced the number of contractors on the farm. Uh, we had a contractor known as Anderson Hay or MTA Farms, uh, that no longer is on the NIP project. Nappy has absorbed that alfalfa production. So that, that alfalfa which was being targeted at the time of Anderson Hay for like export is now being retained so that it can stay more locally and we can continue to have more hay available um, for the tribal members as they come in, uh, as well. Um, I think that's probably a big gist of it. Um, you know, our, our other plants, our granary, our bean plant, flour mill, all of those are being reevaluated right now. Repair work is going on um, so that we can be ready again when their time is needed. Um, the feed yard is currently empty, uh, given the high price of corn and the not-so-wonderful price of cattle. Their-
Time is on.
Hello?
Uh, Mr. Zeller, your time is up, 20 minutes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions? Anyone would like me to address?
Honorable members of RDC, do you wish to give, um, Mr. Zeller an extra five minutes?
Mr. Chair, this is Daniel.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Zeller, you have another five minutes to complete your presentation, sir.
I, I appreciate that. I think, I feel very comfortable that, uh, I've, I think covered all of our items. Um, we have a board that's been very proactive in looking after the employees and thinking about the tribal members. So, um, I think we're in really good shape there. I guess I would just open myself up. Are there any questions that, uh, myself or Ms. Rose Yazi, our COO, um, who's sitting here with me, that we could answer in terms of, uh, questions you might have?
Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second, and then we can ask questions. Motion?
I would get three motions.
Honorable Daniels?
Motion?
Uh, who's this?
Delegate Daniel.
Uh, Honorable Daniels, thank you. Second by?
Delegate Stewart.
Honorable Stewart?
Oh.
Back here? Honorable Stewart?
Yes, and I-
Second.
I did.
Okay.
Delegate Stewart.
Okay. Thank you for that. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any questions for Mr. Zeller and Ms. Yazi?
Mr. Chair, this is, uh, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, go ahead, sir.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, for all, um, resources and the Dom Committee, thank you, colleagues. I don't know, 24 council colleagues. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank, um, Mr. Zeller for doing his, uh, presentation on, on the, the, on Nappy. Um, um, the, the other week, um, I believe it was last month, I requested for a leadership meeting. Um, RDC to have a meeting with, um, Nappy to get an update on where everything's at and how Nappy is doing. So, but, uh, today we got the, the report from, uh, Mr. Zeller to think we're going to be okay. Um, I don't know if, um, my colleague still wants to have the, the leadership meeting, but I, I'm okay with this, with this, uh, report for those, with the, the update report. Um, my concern at that time was, um, are we going to be okay on, on hay for our community members? The reason why I say this is because, um, we're experiencing, um, extreme, uh, drought throughout the Navajo Nation. And as you look around, when you drive on the, the Navajo Nation, there's little to less, um, forage. No forage on there, to the, the nation. A lot of these, um, livestock are out there roaming, looking for, uh, forage to graze on, but there's none out there. So we're experiencing, um, drought on the nation. I think, I think, um, um, Mr. Zeller, um, that's one of the, the question I had at that time. Are we okay? Are we going to be okay on hay? Are, are we going to run out? Because, um, Navajo Nation Council, RDC, we approve Agricultural Infrastructure Fund in the amount of $4 million for 110 chapters using the 50/50 formula. And a lot of these chapters, they're going to be looking towards, um, Nappy to, to purchase hay. So throughout the winter, spring, are, are we going to be okay on hay? That's, that's my question because when you go to Nappy, you see a lot of these, um, uh, semi-trucks going in and out of, uh, uh, the Nappy dam, transporting hay off, off the Navajo Nation. So that, that's one of the, the concern I had at that time. Um, and another thing is that you, you brought it up, when you, when you go to Nappy, yeah, I, I get my hay from, I get those, I pick bales, those, uh, three-quarter ton bales. When you, when you drive into Nappy, you see a lot of, uh, these, uh, prairie dogs. You see a lot of, um, mounds out in the field. Um, a lot of, uh, prairie, prairie dogs standing by the road. Some are crossing, crossing roads. But, um, Mr. Zeller, how are you addressing this, uh, prairie dog issue? Um, so that's, that's the question I- So, uh, thank you, Mr. Zeller. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Uh, Mr. Zeller, your response, sir?
Thank you, sir. Um, certainly we hope that we will be okay for hay. You never know until the season's actually over. Um, as mentioned, the board went through the process, our Nappy board, um, and took back over. The hay that was being used by Anderson Hay for export is being made available. That was roughly 4,000 acres, Ms. Yazi. Does that seem right? So that hay is now available locally. Um, knowing the conditions of the drought, the limits have been taken off of hay right now for people. Um, as you're well aware, one of the things that we address here at Nappy is some of the enterprising individuals that like to come to Nappy, buy hay, and then pull down to flea markets and alongside roads and sell hay at a higher rate than they paid for at Nappy. Um, we do put rates on usually during the latter part of the winter month um, in an attempt to stifle that activity and make sure that it's going directly to the tribal members at a more reasonable rate rather than the marked up rate. Right now that's been taken off as hay's coming in so that people can build up some stockpiles if they would like to. Um, and I, I'll turn it over to Ms. Yazi and she can outline the amounts that are set aside right now. She deals every day in those fields. Um, but with regard to the prairie dog, we are pursuing every legal strategy that we are aware of. Um, there are certain times of the year that we're not allowed to do anything with regard to fighting the prairie dogs. There are various products that at times are not allowed to be used. We have even approached the federal government about the possibility of reintroducing ferrets, um, to help fight. We're taking every step that we can to fight the prairie dog problem, and it is a problem here. Um, and maybe Ms. Yazi has some other comments. I'll turn it over to her at this moment um, so that she can, uh, address Mr. Daniel's comment regarding the hay, given the fact that she's more closely working with those people.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yazi.
Good morning, um, Mr. Chair and, um, the, uh, RDC member. She Rose Lynn Yazi. I don't, the dog, at the shenan, the she key, a COO, Chief Operating Officer. And they dog, um, been days, the she, that the yeah, he do, the, uh, and then say, uh, uh, because the she, uh, could be, uh, alfalfa. I need what, um, the net, oh, you, you have to be net. Is there going to be enough? Is there gonna be enough through this winter, through this drought? Every day, we get people from, all the way from Tubus City, um, Oljeto, Shanto, Navajo Mountains. Uh, so, uh, an example, um, first cutting, uh, the, uh, supreme, the premium. That was twenty-seven percent that we produce off of this crop, off of nineteen thousand, four hundred thirty-eight acres. That alfalfa is very hot, and you can feed just straight, straight, uh, alfalfa. A, the dairies, dairy farmers, A, between the seasonings. And that's where the premium, the supreme and premium's going to. It's a game, they five fifty, go ya. Um, you see them by the truckload. Every day, you're looking at about thirty, thirty-five, forty truckloads, truckloads. It's, uh, the good, the fair, the cow hay and the alfalfa grass, seventy-three percent. A, odd, uh, region two yard, that's where it's gonna go for our Navajo people. Um, for the equine, um, folks, there's performance, there's ranch horses. Along with that is, like Mr. Zeller mentioned, uh, tribal ranches. Uh, A, Austin, we're starting to put those away for them. The chapter houses, we always put five thousand tons away for them. Even though there hasn't been any requests, but we're putting that aside for them. The lower grade, so, right now, we have a little over four thousand tons. Four thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight tons, reaching two scale. Uh, to three twine and big bale. Fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five tons, a field. That's gonna all go into the yard for our Navajo customers, uh, and other customers. A, what, uh, and I, um, call in, hold on, yo. Um, the quality. So, um, I worry for them, I mean, that's, that's our plan to put that away for them. So, approximately, we projected forty-six thousand tons to reserve for the Navajo Nation. And we're working within this production so that we have the more of the lower grade for them and to go into the yard. It might be more than that. It might be fifty-six thousand by the time we get done. So, again, um, we are with you on looking at this drought. Uh, what, uh, and we see also the number of cattle, sheep that's coming off the Navajo Nation being sold. So, uh, even much, um, we're, we're working with how, how much we're putting into the yard for you. That's gonna last you, last the Navajo Nation from here till first cutting next year. That's the third week of May of twenty-twenty-two. That's how we're reserving the hay for, for the nation. So, again, um, uh, we go back to the prairie dogs, I mean, we have hunting going on. And in the website, um, it shows, uh, what, the license, the training that you, whoever wants to come up here and hunt. Uh, that's with the safety program, and we're, again, going out and doing other treatments. Uh, uh, oh, you, I mean, uh, what, uh, and we're trying to work within, within, um, the perimeters of, um, EPA and other, um, policies and regulations. So, eh, eh, what, uh, so, I hear, uh, shut, no, I mean.
I hear, and she's, uh, some, like, Ms. Yazi. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any questions or comments? Honorable Stewart, go ahead.
First name, Shanae. Those, uh, I can, uh, those, uh, I don't know, so, no, he's not, I get this morning, listening with us and participating in our meeting as listeners for your communities, for yourselves, nation. Um, Mr. Zeller and, so, yeah, thank you for the presentation this morning as well. That we have received a couple of questions that, that I have are with, um, this drought season right now that we've all been talking about and the emergency that is, um, foreseeing and well, and well happen. Um, what areas or what thoughts has, um, NAPI taken in or is considering for shelter for those livestock out there, um, within this Navajo Nation boundaries, I guess? But, um, but our ranchers have out there? And then also, the other one is with the seasonal crop circles that, um, are done with NAPI. And what, when would that be available to our ranchers and within the Navajo Nation? Not only in Mexico, but also, um, Arizona side as well? And then what are the, who is the contact for that? What are the fees? Are there fees related to that as well? And, uh, insurance purposes as well for, for their livestock? And then knowing that, um, my last question would be knowing that we have been dealing and carrying a lot with, um, some theft of livestock, whether it be cattle, sheep, goats, horses, whatever they may be, um, that ranchers are dealing with right now on that side, or not even on that side, but across the nation and the different communities, and knowing that we do have some ranchers that, um, lease, um, seasonal from, from you all during that time. Um, is that what the insurance covers or, and what is the, um, security on that now out there? And do we, are there some ranchers out there now that have their livestock there? Those are my questions, just to ask. Thank you, Shanae.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Mr. Zeller?
Mr. Chair, uh, I can answer those questions. This is Rose Lynn again. Um, currently, again, this is the second year we're going into this custom grazing. We have a total of seven Navajo ranchers, ranging from Utah to Kuyanta Eastern that are here grazing on, on some of the circles. And the grazing program, um, is starting this fall as soon as we harvest, start harvesting the corn. Are, actually, some of the fields will be available once we harvest the wheat. Once we harvest the wheat, what we do is we take off the straw. And in the crop rotation, it either goes to alfalfa. If it, those that don't go to alfalfa, we diss that up and try to get, uh, regrowth off of that, and that's when grazing will start. Um, then we have potato, uh, bean fields that we are gonna be planting cover crop, and that's gonna be available. Then we go into corn, cornstalk, the grazing will be available. Into pumpkin, popcorn, those fields will become available. Again, um, we are setting up presentation to, um, with the grazing, like Mr. Zeller mentioned, that we were, we are gonna be presenting, um, sending that information out for this grazing across the Navajo Nation. So, the, they, the ranchers out there can utilize it. In that presentation, the, um, the insurance, the, um, water code, uh, the prices of, of each crop that the ranchers will be, um, grazing, uh, those prices will be available at this ti- at, at that time. So, um, again, our, we try to get, work with our Navajo people, make them priority uh, over the, the non-Navajos when that time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yazi. Honorable Daniels or Honorable Stewart, do you have any follow-up questions?
Uh, Shanae Chair, I have a follow-up.
Uh, go ahead, Honorable Stewart.
So, with these presentations, are they gonna be done to the agency council grazing or agency council chapters or district grazing? Or are they gonna be done through the committees that, um, council serves on? Or are they gonna be going to a hundred and ten chapters?
Normally, what we do is when we send out the forage information to the chapter, we include that too. But these are gonna be, uh, right now are, um, the gentleman that's overseeing the custom grazing is gonna be doing the agencies to, um, and that's how he's gonna be scheduling it.
Honorable Stewart, do you have a follow-up question?
That's it, Shanae. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable members of RDC, any other questions or comments? None? Yes, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Chairman and committee members. I do, uh, presenters, uh, from, uh, NAPI, Mr. Zeller and Ms. Yazi. Appreciate the, uh, presentation to, uh, RDC this morning. Um, I have a question on the feasibility study that was done for, uh, the Loop, Bird Springs area a few years ago. Um, if you can just, uh, briefly, um, give the committee information on that. Uh, it could be today or later. Um, and it, it could be, um, part of a, uh, leadership meeting that was recommended or requested by, um, Honorable Daniels. Requested a leadership meeting with NAPI. Obviously, for more in-depth information, uh, I don't know exactly what he had, um, he was thinking about, but for some of us, uh, I'd be interested in having that leadership meeting. And maybe that's the time to, um, discuss, uh, feasibility studies NAPI has done, um, for various, uh, projects. And, uh, in particular, one done for Loop and Bird Springs area. And see the, um, feasibility of that. Those ideas or, um, to get a report on if, if it's feasible or non-feasible. And if there's an interest from, uh, NAPI or, uh, enterprise, um, with regards to potential, possible sites out, southwest Navajo. So, uh, that'd be my question, Mr. Chair. Um, I do, yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Zeller, Ms. Yazi?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, somebody's been heavily involved in that is Lionel Hasky. And probably the best way for us to approach is that we will get with Lionel and go back and review and see where we're at on some of these things, and then get back with, uh, Vice Chair Walker.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Zeller, I, um, really appreciate that. So, we can keep in contact, um. Oh, um, so, I, uh, look forward to, uh, having a meeting with you on this. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Honorable members of RDC?
Mr. Chair, Daniel?
Honorable Daniels, go ahead.
Yes, now, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Zeller. Thank you for your presentation. Right now, the, uh, unemployment rate is high on the Navajo Nation. I don't know, a lot of our Navajo people are, are not working. So, they, they still go to the, they still go to NAPI to get hay. I know, um, years back, they used to have like a, a substation or kind of like a, an office where they used to sell hay. NAPI used to sell hay right there at the, the junction of one sixty and ninety-eight, yeah, in Shanto. That was more feasible for our Navajo people in, 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 in that region. So, um, the future, would it be possible to come up with something like that again? And, and maybe in all the five agencies, so people can go to that place and get their, 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 their hay, feeds and whatnot. So, it, it even, I just, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, NAPI. In API, they used to sell hay in, in Shanto. They used to have like a little yard in, in, in the Shanto area. And, you know, then, then, uh, so, so, uh, the, uh, so, so, uh, so, uh, maybe the five agencies, uh, a little, um, some, uh, for a little place where they can, um, sell hay, grain, and other feed. So, it, it even, I just, uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Mr. Zeller or Ms. Yazi?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Niz. Um, the NAPI board is scheduled to meet on Friday for their quarterly board meeting, and Ms. Yazi and I will bring that up to the board again about off-site locations.
Honorable Daniels, do you have a follow-up question?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't have any, um, I don't have any further questions. Maybe to Mr. Zeller, maybe, uh, maybe update us, uh, maybe the email us on what the, the outcome is from, from the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Zeller, you heard that. If you would also, uh, provide, maybe Ms. Ghul could provide us an update on the discussions of the NAPI board. So, thank you, Mr. Zeller. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair? This is Shammy. I have a question. I have a question. A, a couple, um, maybe about a year back, we had a meeting with NAPI. And, um, at that time, one of the board members indicated that NAPI was gonna look into re-establishing their feed yard. And I'm just wondering if there was any further discussion, uh, with the NAPI official and see whether if there is that possibility of reopening the feed yard for some of the Navajo families that are needing a place to take their livestock. I'm just wondering, Mr. Chair. Back to you.
Mr. Zeller, Ms. Yazi?
I, I can address that briefly. Uh, as mentioned earlier in the day, the feed yard is empty right now. Uh, that is a result of basically the economic climate, um, out there. Uh, we did have a subcontractor who had leased the feed yard. The margins were not sufficient for him to continue to operate it profitably. The margins were not sufficient for him to continue to operate it profitably. Uh, I know that I constantly run numbers based on, you know, cost of calves, the cost of corn, et cetera. And quite frankly, right now with the feed inputs, uh, if NAPI, for example, were to buy cattle and put in that feed yard, they would lose two hundred and twelve dollars a head. Um, so at this point, you know, there hasn't been much appetite from the people involved at NAPI. It's not to say that we aren't open to doing that. But it really at this time is just not cost, um, conducive to, uh, to be open. Uh, we're looking for a change in the economic climate and perhaps the right employee or subcontractor um, to operate that feed yard. But when we're looking at corn as an example costing six dollars a bushel, we've talked about the cost of hay, et cetera. Um, you know, the, the operation of a feed yard right now is, is really prohibitive. I, I don't know what else to say at this point. Again, we are open, you know, to, to running a feed yard. But you have to have a certain amount of animals run through it to make it profitable. And, uh, that has been, I think, a problem in the entire life of the feed yard here at NAPI was having sufficient volume to make it a profitable venture.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Are there any other comments or questions? Honorable members of RDC? Um, we have on the line with us former Speaker, Honorable Lorenzo Bates. If it's okay with you, he would like to ask a question. Ashbeal?
I've got Chair.
Okay, good. Uh, Honorable Speaker Bates, you're welcome to ask a question, sir. Mr. Bates, press star six to unmute. Speaker Bates? Press, press star six to unmute. Mr. Bates? Uh, Chair?
Chairman Nez? This is Dave Zeller. Perhaps I can just, um, call Speaker Bates directly and see what he, um, um, to see what his question was, um, you know, at a different time, like after this.
That's fine. Thank you. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and accept the report. Honorable Freeland's excused. Honorable Stewart, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Begay? Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Honorable Vice Chair Walker was driving to Winter Rock, so perhaps it'll, he lost reception and he'll probably get back on with us here. Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Honorable Vice Chair Walker just texted in. The vote's green, so we do have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. We'll move along to B, Status Report Relative to Intex Business Site Lease. Ms. April Quinn from the Department of Justice, you have the floor, twenty minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, RDC members. Um, I just have a, a quick update on this, uh, particular, particular lease. So I spoke with, um, Intex General Counsel Bernard Masters and we agreed that the starting point on this agreement should be the nation's, um, standard surface lease terms. This wouldn't be a business site lease, it'd be a lease issued by DNR. Uh, and so I promised to send Mr. Masters a copy of our standard terms and conditions. Um, thought that was going to be easy. I thought I had just, you know, a, a template of those, then realized I didn't. And so I have to go take an existing agreement that uses our standard terms, kind of pull out all the specifics to that agreement and, you know, put in some blanks and then shoot it over to Intex General Counsel. Um, I just haven't had a chance to do that yet. As I mentioned in an email this morning, um, we're short-staffed over at Natural Resources Unit. So we're all kind of juggling a lot right now. Um, in addition to this agreement, I have, um, several others in the pipeline as well. So just trying to find the time, um, to send the draft lease to Mr. Masters. And as I promised all of you in this, uh, in my email this morning, I will get it over to him by the end of this week. And I also emailed him and let him know that as well, um, to expect an email, um, with the draft terms. Um, as far as the substance of this lease, I believe that we have talked previously in executive session about this lease. So I don't know if anybody, um, on RDC has any questions about the substance. But I just wanted to remind you that we previously spoke in executive session. But it, it's completely up to you if you want to talk substance either in executive session or in a public setting like this. Um, so Chairman, that's, that's all I have to report right now. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Quinn. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Second by?
Right.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Are there any questions or comments? Honorable Vice Chair Walker, could you, um, take over the meeting while I would like to be recognized to request to speak?
Uh, yes, Chairman. Okay, so, uh, thank, thank you for the, um, gavel here. Uh, Chairman, uh, you can have the floor to speak or address committee.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Quinn, thank you. Certainly appreciate your report and update on the Intex Business Site Lease Request. Um, I don't know how many days we have left. I remember we approved it for an extension for up to ninety days. And my question to you, Ms. Quinn, is does RDC need to write another letter and approve that for another thirty, the third, another ninety days? Ms. Quinn, that will be my question. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Thank you, uh, Chairman Nez, for the, uh, question there. Uh, Ms. Quinn, you have a response?
Um, thank you, um, Chairman Nez and Vice Chair Walker. Um, I would have to get back to you on that, um, searching my emails, uh, or searching my computer for, for the letter that was, that was sent. Um, so I, I will provide a written response to, to you and the RDC members with respect to your question. Um, I do remember that, um, BIA saying, you know, as long as the nation and Intex are moving forward, um, with negotiations, that we, we should be, we should be fine as far as the federal regulations are concerned. Um, they just want to see the nation actively negotiating with parties with respect to leases. Um, but I'll, I'll reread the letter that was sent to BIA and then I'll, I'll provide a written response to RDC.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Um, Chairman Nez, follow-up?
Uh, yes, thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Um, Ms. Quinn, uh, I would appreciate that and your response in written form. Therefore, if we should need to, then we can put it back on the agenda to take care of that. So, thank you very much and thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Okay, Hashi, Shanda, Chairman. I hand the gavel back to you, the virtual gavel. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable members of RDC, are there any other questions or comments? None? We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Freeland's excused. Honorable Stewart, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Begay requested to be excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
I vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Number six on the agenda, old business, there's none, new business. A, legislation zero zero ninety-eight dash twenty-one. I am the sponsor, so I'll hand over the virtual gavel to Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairman. Thank you again. Um, Hashi, uh, advisor, uh, Ms. Begay, can you give us a reading of the legislation?
Chairman? Okay, okay, I got the legislation here. You have Legislative Summary Sheet for Tracking Number zero zero nine eight dash twenty-one. Uh, the date on it is June eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The title of the resolution, a proposed nomination council resolution and action relating to resource development. NABKIA Committee and the Navi Nation Council, Resending CMA dash sixteen dash twenty, entitled "An Action Relating to an Emergency Regarding the COVID-nineteen Virus Within the Territorial Jurisdiction of the Navajo Nation, Ensuring Safe Protection Upon Roads Within the Navajo Nation By Declaring All Navajo Nation-Owned and Maintained Roads Shall Be Closed to All Visitors and Tourists." This legislation is assigned to Resource Development, NABKIA Committee and Navajo Nation Council. Prime sponsor of the legislation is, uh, Ricky Nas. And also co-sign as co-sign on as co-sponsor is Herman M. Daniels. The, um, legislation, the con, the exhibits that are in, in the content of the legislation, they are all attached to the packet, Exhibit A. And, um, those documents are all attached to the, uh, legislation packet that I sent to you. And you will note that the packet went through the one sixty-four, the, um, it was hold on, I'm trying to find the right document pages right here. The, um, packet was posted on the Navajo Nation Council website on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And the five-day comment period ended on June nineteen twenty-one and it became eligible for RDC's consideration. At the time when the five-day comment period ended, there was five supporting comments that were received. And those comments are attached to the packet. You also receive one comment that would provide a recommendation and just commenting on the legislation. All of those documents, the correspondence that were received, those are attached to the packet that, the updated packet that we sent out this morning. Mr. Vice Chair, members of the committee? Earlier, you received a email from Legislative Counsel Mariana stating that when the Office of the Legislation, the Office of the Speaker, I'm sorry, the Office of the Speaker, uh, assigned the legislation to the standing committees. They inadvertently, uh, left out Health, Education, Human Services Committee off of the, um, list for assignment. So today, when we consider this legislation, our committee report will be issued to Health, Education, Human Services for their consideration before it goes to NABI. Just for the record, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Back to you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Begay for the, um, reading of the, uh, documents there. Um, committee members, let's have a motion and a second. Committee members? Let's establish a motion and a second.
Motion, this is a fail a motion, yila. Delegate Daniel.
Okay. Delegate Daniels, motion, is there a second?
Stewart.
Okay, Delegate Stewart offers that second. Hashi, um, I do, yeah, sponsor. Chairman Nez, you have the floor to present the legislation.
Uh, thank you very much, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. This legislation is rescinding CMA sixteen dash twenty. The title of that resolution was "An Action Relating to an Emergency." At the beginning of COVID-nineteen, regarding the COVID-nineteen virus within the territorial jurisdiction of the Navajo Nation, ensuring safe protection upon roads within the Navajo Nation by declaring all Navajo Nation-owned and maintained roads shall be closed to all visitors and tourists. This legislation, uh, pretty much rescends that. With the decrease in numbers of those contracting COVID-nineteen, I believe that we're also having people vaccinated, a good number of people across the Navajo Nation. And now we're getting to a point where we're slowly opening up the roads and safely continue to take care of ourselves and encouraging our people to continue to wear, wear their masks, which we, some of us still do. So visitors and tourists. Visitors and tourists, people that want to come back on the Navajo Nation without feeling discriminated against. So our casinos can also continue to operate and really survive on its own financially as it did prior to COVID-nineteen. So so I do also have an agent with me. Mr. Brian Parrish is on the line with me, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. If it's okay that he may provide a statement, sir.
Okay, thank you Chairman Nez. Yes, we can allow your agent to speak. Mr. Parrish? Mr. Brian Parrish, you have the floor? You may need to unmute.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, we can go ahead and proceed if that's okay.
Okay, okay, Hakuishi. So committee members, do you have any questions or comments to the legislation, comments and questions to the sponsor?
Delegate Walker?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted, this is Melinda from the Speaker's office. I just wanted to follow up with Shammy's comment.
Okay, Hakuishi, go ahead, Melinda.
Okay, thank you for, just for the record, there was a memo from Speaker Damon that was sent over to the Office of Legislative Council regarding the legislation going to the HESI Committee as well. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that information, Mr. Arvisos Yako.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, this is Shammy. Can I request for a copy of that memo so that we could make it a part of the legislation packet for the record?
Okay, Hakuishi, Ms. Arvisos Yako, if you can send a copy of that memo to our advisor as well as our committee members.
Yes, I can do that, thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions, comments to the sponsor? Delegate Daniels?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair?
Yes.
This is Shammy again.
Yes.
Can we pause for a moment and and get a copy of the memo because we might need to make a motion to amend the packet so that it'll be added onto the legislation for our record? Mr. Chair?
Hakuishi, we certainly can do that. Shamita, let's take a moment here, waiting for the documents and let's see if it needs to be added on to the legislative packet. Is, Ms. Begay advised?
Honorable Chairman Nez?
Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, Mr. Brian Parrish is on the line
now. He was calling in, so he's probably on the line now.
Okay, Mr. Parrish, are you on the call with us?
Honorable Chairman Nez, sir, this is Brian Parrish.
Okay, Mr. Parrish, this is Vice Chair Walker. Sponsor and Chairman Nez has asked that you provide comments or statement to the legislation that is before RDC right now. So this time you have the floor.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, sir, thank you. Mr. Chairman Nez, sir, thank you for the opportunity to assist. I apologize for being tardy. We were on a permanent trust fund conference call with Budget and Finance Committee, so I apologize. The first thing I would like to share is that our enterprise has been focused on three primary objectives during this pandemic closure. Number one is is doing everything we could to protect the health and safety and general welfare of the Navajo people and our team members and our patrons. Number two, the second thing was to be prudent with all of our expenses and costs and make sure that we did everything we could to preserve the nation's investment in the enterprise and also protect and preserve jobs because that's vitally important for for the Navajo people, which is why this enterprise was was created, to create jobs and economic output and and a fair rate of return to the nation. The third thing was that once we did have the opportunity to open, that we demonstrated flawlessly our ability to execute our workplace safety plan and have superior protocols in place to protect everyone because we didn't want to invite our team members back to work and we certainly didn't want patrons and the Navajo people to be coming to the properties if we weren't fully confident that we were prepared to protect everybody properly. So what I'd like to share just briefly initially is that we've worked diligently in all those areas and that we've positioned ourselves to be able to reopen on an expanded basis and protect everybody if we open these roadways and allow non-Navajo Nation residents to come into our properties. Want to share with you that we've worked arm-in-arm with the Health Command Operations Center to make sure that our workplace safety plan was comprehensive, that we didn't miss anything, and that we were fully prepared to protect everyone. We're pleased and proud to share that as a result of the collaboration of everybody involved, we have not only had an outstanding plan, but we've executed it flawlessly. I want to share that as part of that plan, we've been doing regular testing of our team members. In the last six weeks, we've conducted three full COVID test cycles of all of our active team members who are working, almost 1,900 individual tests that we've administered, and we've had zero positive COVID test results coming out of that. That's an indication that our team is following the protocols at work, but they're also taking the training home with them that they've received from the enterprise so they can keep themselves and their families safe at home. We've had no issues or incidents with patrons being allowed in that were potentially affected. We have comprehensive screening in place at the front doors with comprehensive controls, and we also have an outside medical services company helping us do screening of our team members every time they come into the property. So we have been able to demonstrate that that we're able to maintain a very safe and secure environment, that we've been able to do it at 50% operating capacity in terms of fire code and also within food and beverage. We feel we are more than ready to open up and be able to accept non-residents back to our operations. Number two, I want to share that we have 79% of our team members have been fully vaccinated. The only reason that number is not higher is because we still have our Twin Arrows property closed and that we still have 310 of our workers that are on layoff. That means 310 of their of their families are presently in jeopardy of of not having income going forward. And the reason I say that is because the states or the federal government, excuse me, has stopped as of July 1st with offering that unemployment benefit, the incremental weekly COVID benefit to to anybody that's out of work. So that goes away, that puts the income in jeopardy for our team members that are still on layoff. Number two, the states have also implemented active job search requirements again so that if our team members who are on layoff and unemployment, if they're not out actively searching for other employment, that they will be in jeopardy of losing their unemployment benefits. Again, 310 team members and their families that are suffering and going through that. I want to share that going into the pandemic, we had 1,180 jobs, 83% of which were held by enrolled members of the Navajo Nation. That number has gone down by 20%. We've had 219 resignations, 88.3% of whom were submitted by enrolled members of the Navajo Nation. So 88% of those 219 team members that resigned are leaving and leaving their homes to go outside the Navajo Nation for other employment. We want our our team members to be able to stay home, stay and work in the communities that they're helping to build and benefit from this enterprise because that's that's what they've helped build and what the nation has helped to fund and and help create economic development going forward. We're creating or staging job fairs right now, trying to, excuse me, recruit people and keep our team members from having to go elsewhere, but the challenge is that we don't have a firm reopening date for Twin Arrows. We are utilizing our team members from Flowing Water up at Northern Edge, so those team members are not on layoffs. We've been able to to do that successfully and also keep from having any more layoff personnel coming from Fire Rock or Northern Edge. But this is a huge blow to us and to the enterprise and our ability to recover if this closure of Twin Arrows continues on. Now, I will share with you that we have not been told to keep Twin Arrows closed because of two Navajo Nation residents. That was our decision as an enterprise, and I want to share why. We support that the Navajo Nation closed the roadways back in March of 2020. That was essential for stopping the spread of the virus, and we were anxious to be part of that solution in helping with reinforcement. But the big difference for Twin Arrows is that about 65% of our patrons at the Twin Arrows property are non-Navajo Nation residents. Our concern was that if we opened up and only allowed Navajo Nation residents, that we would receive a lot of pushback on that. No matter how hard we have worked with our information campaign to explain why we're doing that, folks that are non-residents, that are not as familiar with how hard the Navajo Nation has been hit by the pandemic, we've had reactions from them where it's been feeling like, hey, you don't want us back, we're not coming back. We have experienced some of that at Northern Edge, where about 55% of our team of our patrons are Navajo Nation residents, 45% are not. At Fire Rock, it's different. We've got about 83% of our patrons there are Navajo Nation residents and the balance of about 17% are not. So those were more manageable ratios for us in terms of dealing with those situations. We have all been on the phones, talking to these patrons, helping them understand the need for the road closures, and as we've gotten to be able to talk to them individually, we've been successful in helping them understand the challenges. However, with with Twin Arrows, it's such a much bigger group, we're not touching all those people yet, and so it's been very, very hard having to rely on direct mail and other ways to be able to alert people, public relations and things on why we haven't been able to entertain people back to the properties. So opening the roadways is vital to be able to invite our non-resident patrons back. We believe again that we've proven our ability to keep our team members and the Navajo people safe regardless of somebody would be coming in and they're vaccinated or not. But our team members, 79% are vaccinated. Our goal is to get to 90%. We think we'll be able to do that once we alert people that we're going to be able to reopen Twin Arrows. And then going forward, we are not, we are not going to relax on the deployment of our COVID safety measures. We are not going to do that until Navajo Nation leadership signals it's all clear and there's no more need for deploying those safety measures. Until then, we are going to continue with all of the safety measures that we have in place, and we're actually prepared to make another investment in the neighborhood of approximately $300,000 for some special active pure technology units, which we will would install in our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, which filter out and kill any viral cells that are airborne or surface-based anywhere in the buildings. So we would put those in the front of the house, in the casino areas, all the public areas and restaurants, as well as in back of house for our team members. We're prepared to go to our board and ask for that approval, to make that investment to further enhance all of the safety measures that we've got in place when the rest of of the the communities surrounding are relaxing their and easing their restrictions, we would actually be further tightening the safety measures and doing more. We're doing that because we, it's the right thing to do. We do not want to put a price on one individual life of anybody, Navajo or non-Navajo. We want to protect everyone. We want to be diligent. We want to continue to make decisions that are consistent with the values of Navajo Nation leadership, the Dinaq people, our board, and all of our enterprise employees. And that's that life, life and preservation of life is is priority number one for everybody. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the committee. We remain diligent and emotionally committed to being safe and protective. We need this legislation to preserve these jobs, to get these team members back from work, to keep them from having to leave their homes on Navajo, to go elsewhere to find employment where they're going to be less safe because these other places that they would be going to work, nobody else is is offering the safety protocols and environment that we are. And so we stand arm-in-arm with leadership. We're asking for your support. We're grateful to Chairman Nez and all of the delegates who continue to support us in this endeavor, and we pledge and promise to you that we are not going to let you down. We will not ease our restrictions, and we will do everything in our power to keep people safe. Honorable Vice Chair and Mr. Chairman, sir, thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity to address the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, for your statements of support. And back to the committee, committee members, any, are there any questions, comments for sponsor or his agent? If not, then we can call for the vote.
Mr. Chair, this is Shammy.
Yes.
Just for the record, just for the record that I am in receipt of the memo that was issued from Speaker Damon, and you all are in receipt of that copy of the letter, the memo. The memo just states that the legislation also needs to be heard by HES committee after our team considers it and and it should, HES needs to consider it before it goes to NABI and the Navajo Nation Council. So just for the record that we are in receipt of the memo, and it will justify RDC's action to refer the matter to our HES after after we are done with discussion on this legislation. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Begay, for that information. So back to the committee, if there are any questions, comments, then we can proceed to vote on the legislation. How do you vote, Honorable Freeland?
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, this is Delegate Nez.
Yes.
I do have a, I do have a question for our Legislative Council. My question is, do we, do we need it to make an amendment to add Health, Education, and Human Services Committee on the title of the legislation, Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Ms. Begay, can you answer that?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I believe Mariana Legislative Council is on the line. And I think that would be the proper action to make, which will be, let me pull up the document again. I had just. That would be on, on page one, on line eleven, we need to insert HES committee. And wherever, wherever it's needed, that we need to add that, add HES committee.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Begay. Committee members. The memo you sent me from the speaker at HESI committee. It does, it doesn't do it. So still, I don't, it's all in the door. So I need to question the document, letter or memo. It be the, the packet. Such a miracle. So could you, could you now, is there a motion? If I don't see something, is there a motion?
Delegate Daniel, motion to.
Okay.
Third, HESI. For everything's needed on the legislation title. The legislative word. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Daniels, for that motion. Is there a second?
Stuart.
What, what?
Hey, I know how to see. Oh, yeah. There was a bathroom. It's a second year. Stuart. Shazam.
He was okay. I was saying, Honorable Stuart, I'll present second. They, questions, comments on the amendment?
Mr. Vice. Mr. Vice Chair, this is Mariana Khan.
Okay. Officer Legislative Council, Mrs. Khan. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to say that usually in these situations where a committee is added, it is, the, the, the speaker's memo is sufficient. But there, there is also, if this committee would like to go ahead and insert the Health, Education and Human Services Committee pursuant to the memo, the speaker's memo, today's memo, it is, that is perfectly legitimate action for the committee to insert its amendment in that manner also because it, it conforms to the, the memo written by the speaker today. So I would suggest page one, line eleven, insert the words Health, Education and Human Services right after the comma, after the Resources and Development Committee and before NABE EAT committee. And then on page one, line twenty-three, insert a new B. And the B would say, the Health and Human Services Committee of the Navajo Nation Council is empowered to review, is empowered, oh, excuse me, has oversight over health matters on the Navajo Nation. And I would find the, the citation mark, the citation for that authority under the Health, Education and Human Services Committee's authorities. And I will give that to Ms. Shammy Begay and Ms. Teresa Woody. So that is inputted correctly and I'll just walk over to their offices and give them that information since I'm here in Window Rock. But those would be the two, the two places where Health, Education and Human Services Committee would be inserted. Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Khan. Motioning party. Uh, could, uh, Delegate Daniels, Delegate Stewart. Do you say that it, ah, he, yeah, I see it. Page one, line eleven, and a page one, line twenty-three. A, yeah, Health, Education, Human Services Committee. A, 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 so. So I need to. A, a, uh, what, uh, you know, uh, the case of, you know. Amendment, that case of.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll tell you. Thank you.
Okay. Delegate Stewart.
Oh. I agree.
So we have, okay, we have concurrence by second party to this motion. Uh, Joe, what, Ella, call. Issue, any other questions, comments on the amendment? If there are none, then we can take, call for the vote. Uh, Delegate Freeland, he's excused. Uh, so Delegate.
Green, Chairman, Vice Chair, green.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I didn't know you were on the call here. Um.
I'm on, yeah.
Yes, my good colleague from Eastern Agency Resource Development Committee member, Mark Freeland's on the call. So we have his vote of green in favor now. Although Delegate Stewart, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, okay. Although Delegate Kialan Begay is excused. Although Delegate Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Okay, Delegate Daniels votes green. Chairman Nez, how do you vote on this?
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Okay, we have another vote of green, my Chairman Nez. What they, for in favor, there are none opposing, Vice Chairman not, not voting here. So that amendment number one passes. Today, yeah, back to the main motion. Committee members, any other amendments or questions or comments? At the machine, yeah, I will call for the vote again. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? My main motion. A vote of green. Honorable Stuart, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, Honorable Kialan Begay's excused. Honorable Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
We have a vote of green. Chairman Nez, how do you vote?
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Yeah, we voted green. So, uh, opposing, eight, and we have four in favor, none opposing. Vice Chairman not voting. So that legislation passes. I put, yeah, Chairman Nez and your agent and committee members. So, um, now, she none, or little. I'm giving the virtual gamble back to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Chair Walker and Honorable Members of RDC. Certainly appreciate the approval of legislation zero zero ninety-eight dash twenty-one. And thank you, Mr. Parrish. Moving down to be approving to schedule a leadership meeting with Navajo Land Department and Journal Land Development Department to discuss the one-stop shop and the proposal to waive grazing permit consent requirements for public utilities. Ms. Begay, do you have a date for us?
Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Begay.
Oh, my gosh. The only day that I have open is July thirteenth. At this time, the, July thirteenth is the only day open. Okay, the other date I have open is July first in the afternoon.
I believe the sooner the better. We were supposed to receive a report from them yesterday, but we didn't, we ran out of time. So the sooner the better. So we'll go with July first. I'd like to establish a motion in a second.
Motion, Stuart.
Thank you, Honorable Stuart.
Second by. Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. And thank you, Honorable Freeland, for joining us today. I know you have a lot of work on your hands with your chapters as well. Appreciate your service to the Navajo Nation, Honorable Freeland. There is a motion by Honorable Stuart and second by Honorable Freeland to have this on July first at nine o'clock AM. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. But I don't, but I don't, motioning parties, but I don't, I don't, I don't. Yeah, just a while ago, we received a, a report from NAPI, Mr. Veller. Yeah, at that time, he indicated that, on that day, July first, Mr. Luhon is going to be at NAPI. They're going to be the. I'm just wondering if any of the RDC is going to attend their, their meeting as well, on that, on the first, even I just killed them.
Uh, thank you for that, Honorable Daniels. I believe as oversight, we should have that day set aside to also attend that meeting from Senator Binray Luhon's visit to NAPI. Um, so the other day would be what was offered by Ms. Begay, which is the thirteenth. So, Honorable Freeland.
Chairman, he's also going to be of a three o'clock meeting with a disondiscy school regarding Chaco Canyon too. So I think we, we should, we should reserve that the first for that visit for Luhon.
Chairman, this is Shammy. The other option, the other option that we could do is just put him on the, on the RDC agenda for Wednesday, our regular meeting on June, on June thirtieth. Because what needed to happen was that Navajo Nation Land Department was going to present the three options for RDC to make a decision on. So if we just put them on the agenda to provide an update report on the three options, then we can move forward with that. And as well as the consent regulation. If that's what the committee wants to do, that would be fine. But like I said, the other only open date that RDC has is the thirteenth. And then the following week, we have Navajo Nation Council. And the, the twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth and thirtieth are open. And that's when, then in August, we begin the budget activities.
Honorable Members of RDC, I believe we could add it on to June thirtieth's regular RDC meeting. We did make a selection on option one, a while back. And we can just review the one-stop shop. And also hear what the proposal is to waive grazing permit consent requirements. So, or reports going to be, be on the, I be, I can. Are there any objections to that?
Mr. Chair, this is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, go ahead.
Um, yes, I think you could, um, could only wait for June thirtieth, add it to the agenda. Uh, so, but this case, I could only wait, I shouldn't, I don't, I don't need. Um, I, I'm pretty sure that a lot of the grazing officials are going to be on the line. And I'm sure they're going to have questions. Oh, you go see, I did keep on the, so I would be comfortable to, to have a separate meeting, a leadership meeting because oh, oh, you go see, I did keep, oh, you go see, I don't know about, I met on the, so So if we put this on the regular meeting agenda, it's going to, it's going to take all day.
With that, Honorable Daniels, I believe we could go with the 13th, July 13th at 9:00. That was one of the recommended dates by Ms. Begay. So Honorable Stewart, are you good with July 13th? That way we can have our grazing officials from the five agencies who are executive officers may, may also participate. Honorable Stewart? With your motion.
Yes, that'll be fine.
Okay, July 13th. Honorable Freeland, are you okay with that? Honorable Freeland? Star 6 to unmute.
Yes, Chairman, I am. Thank you.
Okay, good. Abiga, listen, any other comments or questions? None. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? Honorable Stewart?
Green tonight.
Okay. Honorable Begay is excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Vote green.
Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Honorable Freeland? We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Green Chairman, sorry. Chairman, green, Freeland.
Okay. Uh, Honorable Freeland, vote green. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. C, approving to modify RDC and DCD's June 28, 29 meeting. They cannot locate a location in Albuquerque. So I reached out to Mr. Brian Parrish to see if we could have an, an in-person meeting at Twin Arrows. And he has agreed to, to this. On the same dates, we just have to stay in Flagstaff. We can't stay at the casino itself. So, but the casino, Twin Arrows will provide some food for us while we're there. I know it's going to take all day, so they'll bring us something to eat there. Like to have a motion and a second. Motion?
Freeland?
Motion.
Second, Daniel.
Honorable Freeland, motion, second by Honorable Daniels. Dr. Yelaman, are you on the line? If you are, press star 6 to unmute. None. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any questions or comments?
Shnata, so welcome. This is Delegate Stewart.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we, with this change, then we are going to be confirming that it will be at Twin Arrows with the lodging in Flagstaff. And then the proposed from DCD for Albuquerque will be out. Right? I was just reading a text from yesterday. Okay. Okay, then. And then
Yes.
Um, with that, then with what we're going to be proposing to do, and then with what we're hearing on the news, the variance and everything, the numbers spiking in, will we still stick to this schedule? Or we have an alternative?
Um, Honorable Stewart, could you repeat that last part about the spiking?
Okay, with the, what, with, with what is being reported in the news? And reading the news prints from executive branch? And then how, how close that we're playing it with the, with everything that we're doing as RDC? With the variant that's out there? Would we suggest an alternative? Or are we just going to stick with just this one site?
I believe with the reports that are out there, I I believe we just need to isolate ourselves to Twin Arrows and not invite anybody else other than DCD staff and RDC members. And whichever colleagues would like to attend, that will be up to them. But it's a request from DCD to meet with RDC, so that's sort of like exclusive to RDC and DCD. And meeting at Twin Arrows would be, we would be isolated from everybody and we'll still have to follow the CDC rules. Where we're wearing our mask and also hand sanitizers. And I believe six feet apart too, so. Thank you for your concern, Shitella. Any other comments or questions? None. We'll go ahead and vote. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Honorable Begay is excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
I vote green.
Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Oh, we have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. D, we have the RDC drought tour on the Navajo Nation. Make sure you bring your guitars, violins. We're going on a tour. We received a discussion email from our advisor here. And something for us to perhaps think about. And before our tour, we would like to have this tour as soon as we can. Ms. Begay, do you have a date for us? At least two, two days? Maybe the third day at the most if we need to? If we schedule it on a Monday, Tuesday, we can have RDC meeting at Twin Arrows too, if we can request that. Ms. Begay? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Chair.
Mr. Chair and the committee. The dates that I have, well, you just selected July 13th for Land Department and GLAD. Now what I have. I'm, I'm reserving July 15th because I'm thinking that NABK may be calling a special meeting on that day before the summer session. So I'm reserving that. But the 15th and the 16th are open. That would be the two days that you'll be looking at. And it'd be on a Thursday and Friday if, if NABE doesn't schedule a special meeting on the 15th.
Okay, so looking at those dates, the 15th and 16th, July 15th is on a Thursday. And the 16th is on a Friday. The 14th is on a Wednesday, our regular RDC meeting, perhaps. Where, where should we start? Should we start from the east or the west or from the middle and continue on? Or if we start from the west, we could have our RDC meeting at Twin Arrows on Wednesday, the 14th, and start from there and go to the Honorable Vice Chair Walker's communities out there. And then go north towards Tubus City and Honorable Daniels, and then come this way, Fort Defiance, and then northern and in with eastern. Shnanta, let's establish a motion and a second first.
Motion, Daniels.
Thank you. Second by?
I second that.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you. So, shnanta, the 14th is on a Wednesday. We could have our DC meeting out at Twin Arrows and stay there at Flagstaff as well. And start from that side, so we don't have to drive so far to the west side. For, for Honorable Freeland, myself, and Stewart. Any other, any comments, suggestions, recommendations?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Honorable Daniels.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. What you recommended, be up on that. Delicate Elmer Begay area. Maybe after our meeting the next day, go to Dilcon and go back this way. Western support. Because I really want to look at the Delicate Elmer Begay area. I don't know. I don't know. Go this way. Utah and northern agency and eastern.
Uh, Honorable Daniels, that's a good idea. What we can do is on the 14th, when we have RDC meeting out at Twin Arrows, Ms. Begay, we can minimize our agenda that day. Perhaps if we get done like by noon, or even 1 o'clock with our RDC meeting, we can drive and have a convoy over to Dilcon area and visit those communities there. And then just hold afternoon there. And then when Thursday, we can go to Honorable Vice Chair Walker's area and then up north towards Honorable Daniels and then cut across this way towards the east. On, on the 14th at Twin Arrows. And Ms. Begay, go ahead.
Chairman? You can, you can cancel your regular meeting and reschedule it to a later date. And just do the tour, begin the tour on that day. Because otherwise you would be losing half of the two-day tour that you're proposing. You got, so it can be canceled and your regular meeting can be canceled and rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you for that, Ms. Begay. Shnanta, if we start on the 14th, because a lot of people are going to want to talk to us. If we start on Wednesday, we have three days. Wednesday, we'll start with Dilcon, Honorable Elmer Begay's area, and then go to Vice Chair Walker's area and then up north towards Tubus City and Shanto area. And then I say, we, we just need to come up with a schedule for three days and end up over here at Fort Defiance and also Northern Agency and then Eastern Agency. If we could just cancel RDC meeting on the 14th.
Mr. Chair, this is Daniels. I'm good with it.
Abiga, yeah, okay. Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, are you okay with canceling RDC meeting on Wednesday?
Uh, yes, I would agree with that. Doing the drought tour. Uh, it's important because that's a priority right now. And all meetings are important, all committee meetings. But then every once in a while, we need to do the community meetings or community outreach and stuff. So those are just as important. Oh, I would agree with that, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Stewart?
Chair, tonight. I'm okay with that. The only thing is, just like Shizai stated, the committee meetings. If there's a special NABK yet to get meeting, but that Thursday. And as you stated, we're going to get visitors, community members. And we, we've all been to these meetings where when we go to a community, they, we hear the concerns from the community members. And it's not only from the leadership, but the community members themselves. And then even in our own meetings that we have with our chapters, they get repetitive with the questions, just to be heard. So I don't know if we're, if we're going to do, how far we're going to get. Because I would like to give the time to the community, because as we have in the past, instead of rushing it, I would like to give the time to the community so that we hear what their needs and their concerns are. And also with the staff that will be there with us as well. And this is going to be three days prior to summer session. And if that special NABK yet to get meeting does happen, then we're only going to make one day. Probably just in the western part, southwestern part of the nation. And then we're going to be called back again for Thursday's special NABK yet to get meeting. Then are we going to pick up again on Friday? I'm thinking maybe if we have the proper set meetings for a whole week, that would probably be better. And like you stated, because in looking at the email on the recommendations as well, I saw what area to, to tour. And reading that, you know, it's involving the tour, what is going to be, what would be called a tour team? Which is the whole division under the Natural Resources and all the departments under there and representatives from executive branch as well. And then what are we going to, what plan of action are we going to take? And what are we going to put in place? Because with these meetings that we have, we meet with the people, then we, we listen to them. But at the same time, I think it's going to be better if we have the staff assist us in developing a analysis of what, what we need to do with these, with this division and the programs under it. That's my thoughts, is to make sure that we plan it out the right way instead of just jumping at it.
Are you done, Honorable Stewart?
Oh, shnata, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Freeland?
I'm okay with it, Chairman.
Okay, we have three, pretty much, in favor of canceling the July 14th. And start on July 14th. We do have a concern on the 15th due to, perhaps there may be a NABK yet to propose meeting on that day. So if we just do Wednesday and Friday, it will break up our days and we're not going to be able to come out to eastern and maybe not even northern as well. So we, the only way is if we can be on the teleconference at the same time we're trying to conduct our tour. Some of us can be on the call and still approve this from the 14th, 15th, and 16th. Or our tour. It'll be with Division of Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife, Department of Agriculture, Department of Water Resources, grazing officials from each community, BIA office, and from the president's office, as well as a representative from speaker's office. So I don't, I said in the beginning, things that were mentioned were educational plan. How do we plan this, present this to the public through social media? The radio station announcements and publications. I don't drought contingency plan. And then policy change. We need to focus on which area of our laws need to be changed. And which would include the grazing permits. And also with the state permits and then people that have rodeo livestock. And then next one is the livestock reduction. To downsize, what plan will we have? We'll see what, what their comments and recommendations would be. A reasonable reduction of livestock. Huns, one year, two years, and then come up with an inflammation as well as enforcement plan with that. I don't feral livestock like horses, rescue plans, incentives. And perhaps seek funding for resources for that area. Livestock sale, incentive plans. How much incentive should we provide and how much should be paid out? At the same time, while we're on the tour, listening to our people as to what their concerns are. So do you have any other comments or questions? So far, we agreed to cancel the RDC meeting on the 14th, so we can start the RDC team tour with our, our divisions and departments. Any other comments or questions?
Chair?
None?
Chair?
Go ahead.
The other dates that I have open, and it will all depend on how, how we do the budget schedules, I mean, the budget, budget hearings. So in August, in August, I have the 12th, 13th, the 16th, and 17th open. And you could do one agency, you know, you could select a date and do, do one agency on, on any of those dates. And then the other, the other week that I can, we can also work with would be June 26th. Uh, 27th, we just need to make sure.
Schedule that day, but we can still tour and hopefully we'll have phone reception out where we're at that day. And I think the sooner the better that we need to do this. Any comments, suggestions?
Chairman. Thomas Walker.
Go ahead, go ahead Honorable.
Thank you Chairman and many members and our staff and then those that are listening to our discussion here. The drought tour. Visually see the impact of the current drought situation. The drought that has been going on for years now. The impact. You could also call that an assessment. What is the impact there? At the end, a policy. Policy considerations, policy change, adopting new policies and maybe deleting old policies. As it relates to land use, water use, other livestock. The impact, assessing the impact. A policy consideration. And then there's things in between like consultation with our grazing officials. Other grazing permit holders, other chapters. On this tour, yeah, I think the assessment is very important. We certainly have to do that. Although after the tour. If there needs to be policy work, policy change or adoption of new policies. Other appropriations. And I do appreciate engaging the community, but I would also say that that takes time. That has to be carefully set up. Each community is different and each community, you know committees have a lot, a lot to say in this area. Livestock and agriculture, water. So with all due respect. This tour should not be a public hearing type of activity, more or less an assessment. And then have conversations maybe with our different departments and programs. That relate to land, water, livestock. Chairman.
Thank you Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I think with our team, Fish and Wildlife Department of Agriculture, DNR, EPA, that's good that we'll be out there with them. By then we'll have an assessment of the, the analysis of the land that we just visited throughout the Navajo Nation. And what the impacts were from these extreme and this extreme drought that we're experiencing right now. So. So we'll just go ahead and schedule it for July fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth. Honorable Daniels, you have the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. According to the date, the fourteenth, the fifteenth and the sixteenth, three days, but I'm afraid on the fifteenth. I don't know about on the fifteenth, but starting from Monday. So at least starting from Monday, so that will give us five days. To visit communities. To look at the land, maybe some windmills as well. But meeting with the officials that if every stop that it's gonna, it's gonna. Just to score, just to look at the land, look at the windmill, maybe some earth and depth. Maybe take pictures along the way. If we do the latter part of the last week of July. But according to the study for Monday. What's going on on Monday on the twelfth? Any other.
Um, thank. Honorable Daniels. So your request would be for one week.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. July twelfth through the sixteenth would make sense. We can reschedule the thirteenth. With the Land Department and General Land Department on the one stop shop. And we can move that up to a certain date like Ms. Begay, do you have any other available dates for the one stop shop? Ms. Begay.
Mr. Chair. Like I said. We can. Do. Do our regular meeting in the morning on July seventh and then place. Oh, the leadership meeting in the afternoon to with Navajo Nation Land Department and General Land Development Department in the afternoon.
That's on the seventh, right?
Right.
Okay, that probably will work best to have it in the afternoon like what time, one o'clock, two o'clock?
One o'clock is, one o'clock would be fine. The other thing is that. The twelfth, we have the leadership meeting, proposed leadership meeting with Water Rights and. Department of Water Resources for updates. I haven't finalized that memo yet. I know it's written on my calendar, committee took action on it, but. I am still trying to get the topics for discussion together for, for that particular meeting. So if we include. If we move that meeting. To another date, then you would have that whole week open. And that will all depend, we could move them to the twenty sixth of July. And invite the Water Rights Commission to the, on the tour as well. That would be, that would, you know, that, I'm just sending that out to you for recommendation. But we can move them to the twenty sixth if you want to do the whole week tour. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Begay for that. I believe that RDC committee members. Would really like to see the tour of the Navajo Nation. To make an assessment of what the land is like, including windmills. We're not gonna have a public hearing along the way, but we're just gonna tour, meet here and there. I know each of us that are on the committee know where we would go to. A place we would to. We can move the Land Department. And General Land Development Department on the one stop shop in the afternoon of the seventh. On July seventh. And if we could schedule it the whole week from the twelfth through the sixteenth, that would be helpful to all of us. Honorable Daniels, you have the motion and Honorable Vice Chair Walker, you have the second. Honorable Daniels, what do you think?
Mr. Chair, I, I didn't get the, the question.
General Land Development Department and Navajo Land Department, one stop shop. A proposal to waive grazing permit consent requirements for public utilities. The seventh. We, on the seventh is on a Wednesday, we have RDC meetings on Wednesdays. We can schedule it for that afternoon. We just need to make ourselves available at one o'clock. If we get started at one o'clock, we can probably be done by six o'clock or even eight o'clock that evening. Honorable Daniels, we can get started on July. Twelve, which is a Monday and go throughout the full, the full Navajo Nation, each agency. For five days, one day per agency. Honorable Daniels, with your motion.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Chairman, I would concur with that.
So what we'll do is have the dates from the twelfth through the sixteenth. And cancel RDC meeting on the fourteenth and start the tour on Monday. So we'll go back to. B and reschedule that meeting as well. So for, for now, any other comments or questions? None. Honorable Freeland. How do you vote? Honorable Freeland votes green. His text came in. Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Honorable Begay is excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Green.
Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. Ms. Begay, if you would, let the departments, part of the tour team. Start scheduling how we're gonna go about doing this. So we have the whole week approved. Thank you, Ms. Begay. None. Next, we have E, Leadership Meeting with RDC, Veterinary Clinic and Animal Control. Would like to establish a motion and a second.
Motion, Stewart.
Thank you. Second by. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Ms. Begay, do you have a date for us? Ms. Begay.
Twenty ninth and the thirtieth of July. It's the dates I have open now.
The twenty ninth, attend the thirtieth? Okay, let's schedule it for the thirtieth. At nine o'clock in the morning. It'll be on a Friday. Any comments or questions?
Comment, Chair.
Go ahead, Honorable Stewart.
Okay, yes, I agree with the thirtieth. That's what I asked Dr. Kelly Upshaw-Bai about. And she does recommend the thirtieth because as I have reported before, Thursdays are her surgery days. So this is working with that. The, the reason why I want to have this heard is because we all are aware of the legislation. That Mr. Honorable Eugene So did, but was vetoed by President over the week, this past week. And I also met with Mr. Eugene So here in Fort Defiance the other day. And there is another proposed legislation that he's gonna be working on. And yesterday in the community. Here in Fort Defiance. My Australian shepherd went missing the other night, but I found him yesterday with the animal control. When I was there, I met with the staff and the staff had showed me pictures again of another adult male. That was attacked again by dogs. Luckily, he is fine. He is well, but he went back down to Flagstaff as of today again. For more medication. This happened in Chin Lake. And these are issues that we are well aware of within all of our communities. And so that's why I, I want to hear these reports from them. I did that animal control know that I was gonna be requesting. For a leadership meeting along with the vet clinic one day. And this is the, I'm glad that you recommended thirty because that was the day that they want to do the leadership meeting and presentation as well to RDC. And that's why I want to share, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. With the dogs attacking people, I have legislation that's being drafted. They just need to re-submit a couple of documents and then Legislative Council will, will start on the draft. Legislation for officers for animal control. Just for your information, any other comments or questions? None? We'll put it to a vote. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? Honorable Stewart, thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Honorable Begay is excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
I agree.
Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. We'll go back to. B approving to schedule a leadership meeting with Navajo Nation Land Department and General Land Development. To discuss the one stop shop and the proposal to waive grazing permit consent. Requirements for public utilities. We had approved it for July thirteenth. We need to resend this and select another date, which would be the seventh, which is on a Wednesday. According to the afternoon at one o'clock. So I would like to establish a motion to. Go ahead and reschedule this. For July seventh.
Motion, Chair.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Second by.
Stewart. I'll second.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. Any questions or comments on changing the date to the seventh at one o'clock? None. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote, sir?
Green.
Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Honorable Begay is excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Chairman, I vote green.
Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. We have no other business to take care of. We're on number A, conclusion of the committee meetings. Any other announcements?
Chairman.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I received a request from the chairperson of the Navajo Nations Water Rights Commission. Jolynn Ashley, she has an announcement to make. As well as an invitation to Resource Development Committee. So if you can allow her just a minute or two to do that, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you for that, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. We will go ahead and honor her request. Ms. Jolynn, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, good afternoon and good afternoon, honorable delegates from the RDC and others on the line. My name's Jolynn Ashley, Chair for the Navajo Nation Water Rights Commission, the Western Agency Commissioner. And I wanted to share with you this afternoon during your meeting today is we did get. The commission along with the Utah Technical Group received a request from. Commissioner Kenneth Mary Boy to attend a meeting on July ninth. It was just confirmed yesterday. Well, actually early in the week, so that the Utah Commissioner, Ms. Teresa. It starts with a W, but anyway, her and I spoke yesterday and she wanted to have this time set aside. And this is just the beginning of most likely several meetings down the road with regards to the Utah Navajo settlement. And so she reached out to, to me and to Commissioner Kenneth Mary Boy to. See if we can come up and attend and we are and the Navajo team, which will consist of the Water Management Branch, Water Rights Unit. And the commission will be attending and currently what's on the agenda is to review. The priority, well, the white paper and look at the various priorities because that, that white paper needs to be updated. But also look at beginning discussions on the water management, well, the. The fund. Development Management Fund, I'm sorry. Water Management Fund. So folks from the Utah office there will be there along with some other. Elected officials from the Utah side. So I just wanted to send that information to you all. The meeting will be at ten to one. And it'll be at the Monticello Commission Chambers and I can forward this information to you as it's been confirmed. So I wanted to share that information with you all. We've been having the discussion. We just had our Utah Technical Advisory Group meeting. And I did also announce at that time to the folks on the call. So hopefully we'll get additional. Folks there such as the commission chair and the. There's a lot of different folks here. So I'm reading off the chair. For the Navajo Utah Commission, which is Honorable Delegate Nathaniel Brown and others within that commission. But also the Utah Commission that works with Commissioner Kenneth Mary Boy. And you know, our Navajo internal group along with you all as Resources and Development Committee. So I'm just hoping that at this point, it's an in-person meeting. I'm not, I did make a request to see if they could allow. Some sort of teleconference or call in number if others wanted to attend that, you know, traveling up there as well. So we'll be preparing for that meeting. And I understood that the RDC Leadership Commission. Our, well, our, our, our commission working with you with the RDC Leadership Meeting, I just heard your discussion regarding your tour for the drought. We would surely like to accompany the group as a commission to hear, hear the discussions as we are continually. Working and talking about these topics as well with the various technical advisory groups that are ongoing with all the settlements right now. So if, if we could be added to be included, that would be wonderful. The other is you had mentioned, I heard the discussion regarding rescheduling the commission's leadership. Session to July twenty sixth, that would work with us. I just wanna make sure that at that time we'll, we'll again request that it'll be an executive session. Once we do confirm that date. And we'll be going over all the, the various settlements that are, that have been ongoing. So, but thank you. That's all I have. If you have questions at this point. I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley, for your announcements. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any questions for Ms. Ashley? On her announcement? None? Okay, we'll go ahead and have a motion and a second for adjournment. Freeland. Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second by. Honorable Daniels, thank you. Any comments or questions? None. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Honorable Begay is excused. Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Chairman, I vote green.
Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries to adjourn. We're officially adjourned at one forty-one PM. Thank you very much. Be safe out there and we are in dire need of much prayer for rain. Thank you.
Good night.